Let's see.
Good. All right. We're gonna call the Hermiston City Council Work Session to order. Tonight, you're going to be seeing us in a different venue for the second time.
Yeah, venue.
Right, second time. Where we're trying to create some physical distance during this unique COVID-19 situation. We're also video recording tonight's event, so those of you that are watching from home, we appreciate you watching. We have a unique partnership with Amazon Web Services and the Amazon Chime platform. So citizens that are listening, or can listen, that are watching at home but would like to listen, or maybe make a public comment, they can call in by dialing 206-462-5569 using meeting ID 322-962-8667. And so we will have periods during the meeting where you can participate public comment-wise from the phone. And so staff back here has it under control, and they'll let me know when there's somebody on the phone that would like to make a public comment. So first, we're gonna start out though with our work session. Work sessions for the city of Hermiston, our city council, are opportunities for us to discuss items that need maybe a little bit more time to flesh out, to discuss, to present. Sometimes we don't have a full hour to talk about a specific topic. This is a topic that the city is entertaining this evening to talk about, some homeless shelter projects. And we've asked the group from Stepping Stone to come speak to us this evening. So you have a presentation, it's in a PowerPoint presentation, there's also a few packets. I know there's some public members that are in the audience behind. And I want to make sure that everybody can either hear or see the presentation. So hopefully, everybody has a copy of that and can hear what we're talking about. Welcome. So we're gonna start out, and I don't know who's kicking it off for you guys. Kathy, welcome. Why don't you introduce yourselves and the group you brought with you?
My name's Kathy Lloyd. My husband and I have lived in the Hermiston area for a little over forty years. We raised all ten of our children here, and all ten of them graduated from Hermiston High School. So we're pretty, we have some pretty deep roots here, John. My husband's a farmer, and we own a park, a park supply. And I've been involved in the education system through years of various committees. This is Jess Snell, our vice chair.
Physical therapist, most of you know me, I've been on a number of committees in the past. Been here for twenty-three-plus years. Mayor, I believe that your hair was a little darker, but...
You had more hair than two.
I did, I did.
We're starting out.
And then this is my heart treasurer, Mike Atkinson.
Hi, Mike Atkinson. Welcome to the guests.
So, early last summer, I saw some information about the Wawa Wall Alliance for the Homeless. And a friend and I decided to go over and pay a visit. I have worked in the warming station for Hermiston for a number of years, been a volunteer there. And while I love the fact that through three months of the year, we provide shelter for those at home, I mean, we have another nine months that we don't provide any sort of shelter. In addition to that, there's some limitations that we have within the warming station. If you haven't spent time there, when our individuals are sleeping, they're about sixteen to eighteen inches apart. There's not a whole lot of room. So in a situation such as we're having right now, we wouldn't even be able to operate, because we would not be able to be able to keep our guests that far apart. The other situation is the fact that guests have to take all of their belongings with them when they leave in the morning. And so you'll see them around town packing everything. And so looking at some of those limitations, I've always wanted to be able to buy for a bit more. And so looking at what the Wawa Wall Alliance had, and it was also based on what Eugene is providing, and there's also an entire website with the particular type of shelters that we're looking at. So I will go through the PowerPoint, you do have a full copy of the PowerPoint in the handout I gave you. Okay, in advance. Oh, okay. There are two phases. Go ahead, do what it's supposed to do. There are two phases to this, and most of the time tonight is spent on Phase One, since it doesn't burn. Go ahead and pull up all of, okay. Phase One, that's the development of a sleep center itself, and that would provide temporary emergency shelter for those in need. We're looking at building about twenty-five Comus Toga like huts, and you'll see some pictures, a commons building, and then have another building that would have, another portable building that would have showers and a laundry area. Phase Two, which is the part, as an educator, is what excites me, is the development of an exit homelessness program. And this is where individuals, oops, that wish to stay would actually be involved. They would earn work credit by either being in continuing education, volunteer work, counseling, drug treatment, et cetera. So they would spend time doing those things, and that would earn them further time within one of the Comus Toga huts. And Wawa Wall is in its second year providing that, and I'll provide you with a little bit more information as we go. I think it would be helpful as we go through all of the PowerPoint and then ask questions.
Perfect.
Okay, so go ahead and go to the next one. Okay, keep clicking. This is the entrance from the outside, as you, and these pictures are specifically from Wawa Wall. We're looking at building this site on approximately eight tenths of an acre of land that sits just north of Agapi House, and it is actually part of that property. They've got three acres there, they use one for the Agapi House building, and we would use another eight tenths of an acre on the northwest corner. Go ahead. The site would be fully fenced, and in fact, Atkinson Staffing has been very generous, and they've worked on putting up the privacy fencing already, knowing that if we don't get approved, Agapi House just got a really nice gift. Go ahead. We would be open three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year. And if you remember, our warming station closed March first this year. We had some really, really cold nights in March. Last year, we had a lot of cold nights and snow in March. So sometimes that, I think we're allowed a hundred days, if I remember correctly, to the warming station, just isn't sufficient. Go ahead. We're planning that the site will open with twenty-five Comus Toga huts, and those are the huts that you see behind the fence, and potentially some occupancy overflow tents and a commons building. Okay? This is a picture of the hut. You can see it's very, very simple. They call it a Comus Toga hut, because it's got that look of a Comus Toga wagon. The white chair in there is something that that resident that has a hut has provided. To the right of it, you'll see kind of a garbage dumpster that they put locks on, and they can put their belongings in there and leave them overnight or during the day. Go ahead. The huts will be available for one resident, one couple, or a parent and child. And we don't get a whole lot of children in the warming station, but some of that is because it's not the most comfortable situation. And so we're hoping that if they have their own hut, that it'd be a little bit more comfortable for some of these families that are having housing issues. Okay? Once an individual has a hut, it will be theirs to use as long as all site regulations are observed. And so I'll go ahead, the regulations are in there. A lot of what they'll have to abide by is what we would call the Phase Two. Each hut will have a door that locks from the inside. So when they're in there, they can lock that hut and keep people out, other than the site manager will have a key. The nice thing is, right now, they have no privacy. You know, you're sleeping, there's all these people that you don't know, and there's no privacy involved. You know, and you have to sleep in all your clothing, and so sometimes that's not the most comfortable. But the huts are left unlocked during the daytime. And I forget about the other.
Don't know.
Oh, and they have no power, no electricity. They are just, they're triple insulated to help keep them warm, but they're not meant to be so comfortable that people want to live in this forever. It's supposed to provide emergency temporary housing. Comus Toga huts, if you go ahead and put some of those, they'll have a wooden bed frame, and the site will provide the bedding, though if the resident wants to, you know, bring a sleeping bag in, or blankets are allowed to keep that. But they're not left in there during the daytime. The site monitors that bedding on a weekly basis, that's the same thing that we do at the warming station. At the warming station, we have totes that we keep their bedding in, and we wash them once a week. Each hut has to be cleaned in the morning before the guest leaves, and each resident is responsible for the cleanliness of their hut and the area around their hut. They may eat, they may eat food in their hut, and that's different too for the warming station. They're, if they bring in a sub sandwich or pizza, they're not allowed to eat it there at the warming station. And we don't provide food at the warming station. In this, they are allowed to bring their food in, but once again, it has to be cleaned out at the end of the day. I mean, at the end of the evening. And they are responsible for making sure that happens. That would be one of the prerequisites for them being able to keep that hut. If it's not clean, they don't stay. Go ahead and put the information points in there. They, the cost is approximately twelve hundred dollars in materials, that's not labor. Both Eugene and Wawa Wall used volunteer labor to build these. Different organizations helped, different individuals helped, but the materials themselves are twelve hundred dollars. They are built from scratch, and they're constructed, and actually, I just bought the plans. They haven't arrived yet, but I have bought the plans for, from the organization that they, you know, have gotten theirs from. The nice thing is that because they're from easily obtainable materials, you can see they've used wire, they've used PVC, they've used wood, they've used concrete blocks. They are constructed pretty quickly, repairs are simple and inexpensive. The huts will be financed and constructed by a variety of individuals, organizations, and brands. And so, you know, that's, that's our plan in terms of being able to construct the huts themselves. Okay? They have, Wawa Wall has four overflow tents, and Wawa Wall has a larger number than we do. So we're still determining whether we will need the overflow tents, but basically, they're for people that are needing shelter that are on the waiting list. And so if all the huts are full, and they're on the waiting list, in other words, they signed the agreement, they've met qualifications, then they would be able to stay in one of the overflow tents. And each overflow tent can house two individuals. But the overflow guests follow the same sort of rules and regulations that the regular guests do. Go ahead. This is one of the things that I like, because they signed the agreement, but they also make sure it's posted on the wall what those agreements are. So no one can say, oh, you know, I didn't know that, I wasn't told that. They sign an agreement about what the rules of conduct are, and it's also posted what those are. There will be specific procedures in place for those who can't go against the site rules. This could range from loss of the hut for the night, or it could be a permanent trespass from, from the site. So it just would depend upon what actually happened. And we have that same situation in place for the warming station. And our Hermiston Police Department has been great, you know, in terms of when we called, when there's been a problem at the warming station, they respond very, very quickly to us, and we're very appreciative, appreciative of that at the warming station. So some general information on this one, you'll see in the background, there are several porta-pots. There, there's no plumbing or electricity in these huts, so there's no toileting facility. So we do have, we do plan on having porta-pots there. The site grant, this was interesting, because I did not announce my visit when I came to visit that day. I wanted to see, you know how it is, you have company coming, and what do you do? You know, you throw everything in the closet under the bed so nobody sees. So I didn't give them that opportunity, I wanted to see it as it was, and it was amazingly neat and clean. In fact, that's probably the first thing that impressed me. It was very, very neat and clean, and they commented that the hut residents take a lot of pride in their particular hut. There, there, there's a sense of self-respect, knowing that that's my place. The site grounds are kept for a need sanitary. We plan on having a good security system in place with cameras and such, so that everything will be visible and can be recorded, because we want to make sure our residents are safe, our volunteers are safe, and people in the neighborhood are safe. So we do plan on, on doing that. So one of the things that helped make this work, which is also nice compared to the warming station, is it has a commons, and there's a modular building already on site that Agapi House said that we may use. It can be hooked up to the sewer system, it's already got electricity, and that will be open all night, because some people have trouble sleeping at night. And so at the warming station, if they wake up at two o'clock in the morning, and they're restless, they can't really do anything but just lay there. Whereas the commons is just a large heated building, it does have two bathrooms in it, and it will have, you know, a big electrical hot pot to keep warm water there. They can go in there, they can charge their phones, they can sit in there all night. You know, they could sit and play cards with someone if they wanted, and then go back to their hut when they're ready. But this is just kind of a nice thing to be able to have, so that, you know, if you're not ready to go to sleep, you can go ahead and be there, because the Comus Toga huts are fine for warm weather underneath all the blankets, but not necessarily if you want to sit there and read. Okay? This is just showing you, this is their configuration. They keep a visual of who's in what hut. They do have, and this is what we would like to do as well, they have a part-time site manager, as well as a nighttime security guard. So what happens there is, they use two to three volunteers for check-in at night, so for the first couple of hours that it's open, when check-in is occurring. And for the warming station, we do that from seven o'clock, or seven-thirty till nine o'clock. They have three volunteers there, two to three volunteers. Then the security guy is there, or woman, is there for the rest of the time. So we've got a trained person with a security system there to take care of things at night. Morning checkout, once again, we've got a couple of volunteers there to help take care of the checkout procedure, which includes checking to see if the hut's clean, and people have everything out of the huts. Okay? This, I thought, was pretty awesome. They have a monthly calendar, and organizations, individual families, whoever, can sign up, and they can bring food in to serve to whoever happens to be there. And they said generally, their calendar, that this was right at the first of the month, and a lot of those sites had already been filled out, at different churches, different organizations. In one case, it's a family, I think it's a Monday one, is a family that every Monday night, their family brings food in for fifteen, twenty people. The thing is, we, no cooking is allowed on the site, and so they bring it in, and they take everything with them. So there's no cooking, there's no cleanup, there's no prep, they just serve food. Looking at proposed addition of financial responsibilities, which I'm sure you guys are wanting to take a look at, we would ask that you would pay a portion of the initial expenditures and a portion of the annual operating budget. And if you look back behind the, I think it's my, I faded. I think it's right after, yeah, right after the PowerPoint in your folder, it gives you a more detailed breakdown of what expenditures there are. So we're, this is what we're asking, is eighty-five thousand for the initial expenditures, forty thousand for an annual operating budget. And then Stepping Stone Foundation would come up with the other capital expenses, as well as the annual operating budget. Like I said, there is a full copy of that budget in your packet. Just go ahead, yeah. So I've stayed in contact with Wawa Wall Alliance, and I keep asking them for further information. When they looked at the zoning, they said that the huts are considered tents, because they are temporary. They're rigid, they're insulated, and they're durable, but they are unheated, they're movable, and they're temporary. And their zoning falls under the category of temporary emergency shelter. Wawa Wall City Council passed an ordinance allowing emergency shelters in light industrial areas. And so the area that we're looking at is a light industrial zone. And so, you know, our hope would be that you would be able to look at allowing that temporary emergency shelter in that light industrial zone. These structures don't fit into HUD standards for housing. You know, they are not meant in any way to be permanent housing. This is a stepping stone, that's why we chose that name. We want this to be a step from having nothing to becoming self-reliant. They are affordable, but they're not so comfortable that people want to stay in them forever. This is supposed to be a sleep center, not permanent housing. The exit homelessness program is, is what we would want to instigate. And for Wawa Wall, it's in its second year, and so I wasn't sure how much success it would have in such a short time, but they've helped forty individuals gain permanent housing outside, out of the, yeah. They gained permanent housing that's out of their homeless population of a hundred and fifty to two hundred people. As more people have been placed in permanent housing, they have seen a mental turnaround in others who are now seeking to obtain permanent housing of their own. To me, that's the exciting part. We're not looking to just provide housing, what we're looking at is provide ways for people to gain the skills that they need to become self-reliant, so that they'll be able to do this on their own and not end up needing this. The intent is to provide a safe, clean, and secure environment for those in need of temporary housing. It is meant to be a stepping stone, not a destination. We want them to be able to become, to get to the point where they can obtain permanent housing on their own. So we're planning for them to have opportunities to receive work credit for nightly housing. So that work credit could be volunteer work for the city or for an organization. It could be continuing education, working towards your GED or an associate's degree. It could be enrolling in a drug rehab program, or it could be enrolling in some ongoing mental health counseling. Kind of looking at what each individual's stumbling blocks are. Why are they in this situation, and what do they need? What skills do they need so that they can move on to something else? We're modeling it after a successful program in Wawa Wall, and the educational work portion is being modeled after an international work-winning project called Water Garden in Chaplain, Missouri. And I would really encourage you to take a look at that website, it is fascinating, the things that they've done. Let me, in Water Gardens, they have met the needs of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-three people. Seventy-nine percent of them have had their needs met. They have provided shelter for fourteen thousand six hundred and thirty-five people, and fifty-five percent of their residents are now being employed. So I look at those numbers, and to me, that's, that's what's exciting, is helping individuals gain the skills, the abilities they need to be able to move on. Will there be a hundred percent? Absolutely not. Realistically, we know that, you know, kind of like No Child Left Behind, a hundred percent isn't what's gonna happen. But there are things that we can accomplish, and we can do better than what, what we currently are. If you look in your packet, there is a copy of the budget, and then behind that, there is a copy of our proposed, this isn't set in stone yet, because we were still working on getting a full board, but the proposal for what the registration and what the site rules would be. So, how are we doing? Questions?
So this is like Eugene's, where they, they can't stay there during the daytime?
They cannot stay during the daytime, no. And that's the way the warming station's run, and that's the way, this is not meant to be home. Yeah, it's meant to be a place to come and sleep. It definitely has some advantages over what we're able to do at the warming station, but it is not meant to be their home, we're not building a little city there.
Would the warming station continue? Should that be...
Okay, so when, so a couple of the warming station board members are, have been asked, and they've agreed to be on our board. Depending upon how quickly we can get this going, our thought is that for this next year, yes, the warming station would remain, but we'd also end up looking to see what, what the need is. Because we've, we've had that conversation, well, if we have this, but we need that, we don't have a way of knowing that right now. And we don't really have a good head count in terms of what kind of population we're talking about. I do know, my husband and I had an incident this winter. There'd been a gentleman that sat at McDonald's frequently with a sign. And so one night, as we drove by, we swung through the drive-through, and we bought a meal, and we dropped it off. And I said, hey, you know, you know, we have a warming station, and if you hurry, you know, it's about eight-twenty or so, you know, you could get there while check-in is still, still open, and be able to stay, stay the night there. His comment was, that's a great place to get sick, sleeping that close to somebody this time of year. I thought, well, yeah, but, I don't know. I guess for me, I'd rather have a warm place and take my chances, but that was his, his take, was that he would prefer to stay outside.
Check-in, yes?
Yes.
How long, you may have said this, how long have they needed to stay?
You know, I'm waiting to determine that with the board itself, you know. In, in Wawa Wall, they don't set a limit on that, in Water Garden, they do. And so I think, you know, we just need to take a look. Generally, it's helpful to have, you know, if you're really down and you're homeless, you need a few weeks to have a place to sleep and figure out what you're doing. So we, as a board, would need to determine what length of time that would be before they would need to start getting their work credit to continue. But as long as they're obeying, you know, following the rules and then get enrolled in some sort of work credit, they could stay.
And then it gets so cold here in the winter, and those don't have electricity, so they don't have, are they allowed to have any kind of heat in their own unit?
No.
No.
And I talked to Wawa Wall about that, because their temperatures are very similar to ours. And they said it really hasn't been an issue, they've been able to provide enough bedding that they're, they're warm. They've been able to provide enough bedding that they're warm. Do they want to, you know, sit out? No. But that's also the nice part about having the commons area.
Right. And would there be enough room in the commons?
Uh-huh.
For, okay.
They're triple insulated as well.
Right.
On a stoka, that's... They're small enough so that they're going to generate their own body heat and not a warm-up in there as well.
They said there's about a thirty to thirty-five degree difference within the hut versus the ambient temperature. And they said even in the summer that that insulation helps keep it from being really horribly warm. I also asked them about the wind, you know, because wind is a factor in hermes.
No.
No, no, it isn't. And they said that it's... They're securely attached to the cinder block bottoms and that the only thing they lost, they've lost so far, is a little piece of plastic sheeting. And so that they've called up well.
In the one that we went to in Eugene, one of their people who had stayed there had stayed there long enough, I guess, to where they had trusted him. And he was then their evening... Or he was their caretaker. Yeah. Oh!
Site manager.
Site manager, yes.
I got you. Yeah, that would be... I know that WawaWala was hoping to hire one of their residents to take over because they are building another modular building that was going to be for their laundry. And they were going to allow one of their residents to gain time, further time, by taking care of all the laundry. So, yeah, you know, that's definitely something feasible.
My question going to be, when you guys, the board of directors, are you going to try to recruit somebody that can write grants and go for the federal money or state money for these type of projects?
I miss that.
Wanting to know if people on the board will be able to... Somebody on the board will be able to go after grant federal money.
Yes, that's one of the things. And I do have... I do have an individual that is willing to work on the grants and on state funding and such. So he doesn't want to be on the board, but he said he is totally willing to work on that. He doesn't want to go to meetings.
But he's well-versed and experienced in that area and is working on it already.
Yeah. So... And then we're trying to, you know, work on getting the board diversified. So I'm hoping there'll be... You know, we met with the Alliance of Churches. I'm hoping, you know, one or two of them might want to be on the board. I'd want to meet with the Hispanic Advisory Council and see if, you know, someone from there would like to participate. But, you know, I'd like to see the board be really diverse.
I have a question. So if you... So one of the challenges with the warming station...
The biggest challenge besides the city council? No.
So what are the challenges?
The biggest challenge.
What are the challenges with the warming station to keep it open?
The biggest challenge is volunteers.
So how is this going to be different? Because it's very difficult to get people to come in at eight o'clock at night.
Oh, yeah. I know. I've been called at the last minute.
Yeah.
I think you have too, haven't you, filled in?
So the challenge with this would be that, the same thing.
Yeah. But one difference would be the security guard would do the through-the-night. And that's the biggest shift that we have trouble with. You know, most of our volunteers work. And so to be able to be at the warming station from ten at night till six in the morning and then go to work is an issue. So to have a paid security individual that would take care of that is huge. Our other hope is to talk to service organizations, churches, individuals, and ask them to commit to one or two nights a month so that we know that every first and third Wednesdays, this church is going to come to that. We know that the first Monday of every month, Mr. Drotzmann's going to be there.
So the other challenge with the paid security guard is you'll be competing with every other agency here, like Amazon, the Army Depot, Securitas. They're paying probably a bit more than forty thousand dollars a year to have somebody work.
Yeah.
Perhaps the vocabulary of, you know, nighttime security is not the right one. It's just, you know, somebody's going to be there. One person's going to be there. I don't think there'd be somebody competing with a security guard or Amazon or something like that. It's going to be a really low key. Something goes wrong and I need to call for help, you know.
There not going to be a security guard with them, Dan?
Well, neither of those people. I'm just saying, I don't know that forty thousand dollars... I think it's going to be very difficult to find somebody.
Yeah. And so that is the second issue, is the finances. You know, to make sure that we can get the financial support that we need. I did talk to... I got the information from the warming station in terms of where they've gotten their funding. Whoops, that's not it. And so they've got most of theirs individual donations, payroll deductions, business donations, corporate grants, and then fundraising. And they actually... Their yearly budget is higher than what we're looking at. They're also paying for that house twelve months out of the year. And they're using it three months. But they've got to pay the twelve months because otherwise they don't have it. So, you know, I feel that if they've been able to raise that money financially, we will be too.
Question on the huts. I see mentioned twenty-five huts. I guess regarding occupancy. Do you envision that being at full occupancy?
Yeah. They... WawaWala has thirty-one huts and they are building five more. And when you look at the picture, that whole center section is completely empty. So even with the thirty-one... And they're sitting on between a half and two-thirds of an acre. So they're sitting on a smaller plot of land than we are. We've got eight tenths of an acre. And so looking at that... So like if you look at the one with the restaurant, all that area is empty. So if we needed to, there is room. And then they have... They have an agreement with the city. Every night, they call and they report whether they're full or not. And there's only been a few nights that they've been both the homestoga huts and the tents have been full.
I was just wondering, are you asking, do we think that those twenty-five huts will be enough? Yes.
I do. This year, at the warming station, we weren't ever full. Last year, we did have nights that we were full. But we're full at the warming station with, I believe, twenty-one. And so that's why I said, let's go for twenty-five. You know, and then if we have, you know, a couple of the overflow tents... We've had a ton of this before. So, you know, that's why we're kind of shooting at that. Going back to one of your questions. One of the rules, once you have a hut, it's yours as long as you're abiding by those regulations. You are allowed to miss two nights in a row. But if you're not there by the third night, you give up your place in line on that hut. And that's why those huts are cleaned out of belongings every day. They can leave them in that dumpster and we, you know, block dumpster. And the site retains a key to that. So if they miss a couple of nights and they're not there that third night, then that hut gets passed on to whoever's next on the waiting list. And I wasn't sure if that was part of the question you were asking.
Well, yeah, you know.
Yeah.
I guess a follow-up question after that is the second step based to when they're supposed to reengage back into the community. You know, you said that maybe if they engage in programs, education, is there someone going to be... Is there going to be somebody that's going to follow up that? Make sure that they're doing that? Making sure that they're in their respective classes each day?
Yeah, there's an Exit Homelessness Manager. It's what WawaWala calls it. Hopefully, maybe we could come up with a little more succinct title. But that's what that individual does. Is they work with each guest to help them and then they also do that follow-up. Yeah. And the other thing they found is that when they're put into permanent housing, their Exit Homelessness Manager continues to chat with the landlord to make sure that they're abiding by the rules of wherever they're living.
Would there be any internet access in any of the facility?
Say that again?
Would there be any internet access in the facility?
Currently, we're not planning on that. But I'm hoping that as we get into more of the education portion, that we would be able to have some computers there and have internet access so that, you know, if they're taking nighttime classes or whatever, they'd be able to find them to take the class. But that's not in the initial...
Almost any job you apply for now is online, I think, too, as far as...
Yeah. Yeah.
So you... I've got several questions. One of which, you know, you talked about... It's a follow-up on what you had answered on Jackie. They place their belongings in a locked container. Okay, they don't show up for three days. Who's responsible for their belongings at that point?
So at that point, the site manager, and it's in their agreement, the site manager will store them temporarily over in the... They have like just a small storage area over by their modular building over WawaWala. But... And we would determine how long we're willing to do that. But if they don't show up within a certain number of days, then the site has the ability to get rid of those belongings.
And...
And like I said, that's part of the agreement that they signed.
And my concern is the... Basically, the landlord-tenant relationship there. I know that, you know, there's some in... You know, removing somebody from a property can be difficult at best in civil proceedings. You know, if we've got somebody that we have to move... And my... I guess I'd be pointing more of a question towards Gary. I mean, would this be something that we would be any kind of liable for?
Because it isn't considered housing. It's considered a sleep center with emergency shelter. No. We don't have the tenant landlord issues.
Even though... Even though there's... This is their area until, I mean, you know, with that.
Well, one thing that we wouldn't want to do would be to destroy their identification if they have ID and their belongings. Because they need that to get things, you know, into...
But they're probably going to keep that on them.
They'll be held on them. Or that should be in the rules, that they would be there.
One more question.
Yes.
Lost it.
Oh.
You know, first of all, thank you for coming tonight. I think we're all empathetic about the homeless situation that has developed in not only my community, you know, across the nation. And the council wrestles with this on a regular basis on how can we be better supported for members of our community to help these people hopefully have a hand up and hopefully transition back into contributing members of our community and of society. I think I have some... Just some significant questions here. And they're not designed to be pointed, but they're designed to get at the point of responsibility and liability and, you know, the investment that this community's going to be making. You know, the last thing anybody ever wants to do is start a program that, you know, you put a bunch of money into and a bunch of hope into and it fails in a year or two because it doesn't have the swell behind it to support it for continuity and longevity. And so when you look at the investment that you're looking to make, it's significant. And it has to be long-lasting. And so I know that you guys have put a lot of effort and thought into this. But as the city, you're asking us to contribute a significant portion. It's seventy-five percent in the front side for the facilities and sixty percent of the annualized budget. So the question that I have is, you know, we have limited resources too. And so we would be taking resources from some other program to put towards this. Not saying it's not important, but those services are also important to our community members too. As you can imagine, our budget is not growing. It's declining. So we're looking for more revenue through ways to cut costs in order to maintain the services that we currently have. So when we take on new services like this, we have to figure out how it fits into our budget and if it's worth... Not worth, but if it's important enough to the community to remove something from our current budget to support a project like this. Have you done a survey of the need within the community? So meaning, some people want to be homeless and some people don't want to be congregated. Have you done a survey or spoken with other agencies that are in this sector that help homeless people and found out that there's a need for it and that they would support it and actually want to stay in a facility like this?
A specific survey, no, other than speaking to the guests that have come to the warming station and other individuals. I'm sure you know there's quite a few that are residing in the... Close to the Oxford Trail. And several of them I've become on speaking terms with because I'm there on a data basis. And their interest is very high. And some of those who have not come to the warming station said this is something that they would be willing to come to because they have their own place. They have their privacy. They've got a place to put their things. Whereas they don't... They didn't like so-and-so that they know is at the warming station. They don't like so-and-so here that's at the warming station. Whereas if you don't want to be sociable with anyone else in any of the other huts, you wouldn't have to be. Go and shut the door, you're left to go. I'm not sure exactly how a good way to survey the information other than, you know, the personal experience and visiting with those at, like Desert Rose Ministry that's dealing with this population quite a bit, Lightways that has some contact, you know, with some of those in this population. Now, that's a challenge. But I know the needs there because I see them. I've spent time with them. So I know there is a need to be provided and that we, as a community, can certainly be better. You know, my question that, you know, I've heard a lot is, so are you going to make homeless in a magnet?
Yep. That's my next question.
Are you going to make homeless in a magnet? Any answer's no.
Are you insurance just local?
Just in looking at the other programs contacting the other cities that have done this, the ones that have a problem are the ones that simply provide housing with no other...
Best part.
With no other stack, no other phase two. You know, and they just provide the tent area or whatever. And that does. But the successful programs that see people moving through and moving on, those who are looking for a place to sleep, they can have it for a short time. But if they're not willing to move on to phase two, then they no longer have it. And so that's where you lose the magnet portion, is they're not allowed to just be there. Not unless the board as a whole would make an exception because of certain persons' specific circumstances. The other question that I get asked a lot is crime. You know, visiting with some of the neighbors that are close around the area, they feel that there's already a fair amount of crime there because of some of the clientele that come. All I can say to that is the fact that we are going to put in a good surveillance system. We will have someone there awake through the night. And they're not staying there during the night. We will have someone there awake through the night and they're not staying there during the day. And one of the one of the rules is if you if you check in at seven o'clock and then you go, oh, I want to leave for an hour and come back, there is no coming back. If you leave, you leave. So hopefully some of those things, you know, and then hopefully, you know, with us there and the surveillance cameras, you know, hopefully we'll have a little bit greater police presence as well, you know, maybe, you know, some patrols every once in a while. Anything to discourage the kind of criminal activity that is of concern. Because no, we don't, we don't want to increase that, but we also recognize the fact that it's there. You know, I was part of a project that did clean up along that area. And there was a lot of evidence of illegal activities going on.
But I think because it's populated and because there's security systems, because people live there, you won't have as much crime in that area because the crime is connected to the law. Where there isn't a population, you know, at least among the homeless people. Does that make sense? I could be wrong. Chief could correct me on that.
I'm sure he wants to come up here and volunteer some time to speak to this issue. No, I but that is, those are significant concerns.
And they are, yeah.
I've heard from community members as well, you know, especially from, and I'm sure you've spoken to the neighbors. And some of them are very outspoken about this. I've gotten several earfuls.
I am.
And so, you know, I I think we want to make sure we're sympathetic to those neighbors too and making sure that we're addressing their concerns and alleviating their fears when we're talking about this type of project that potentially would go bring a vagrant population that had the potential history of that closer to other businesses. And so I want to make sure that we're good neighbors in that as well and and making sure if the council chooses to approve this, that we're not approving something that the neighborhood doesn't want or respect.
I think some of the advantages of this set of, one is it isn't a place where we're hanging out. It's a place to sleep and it is a secure, it is a secure place both inside and outside. Very secure, so there's a check in and you have to check out in the morning or you have to check out. So it really doesn't. It doesn't feel, well, I'm going to move there so every night I can check in and then check out in the morning and hang out somewhere. I know I can check in and get my mind as opposed to anything like me. We have to just, this would be great. I can be there twenty four hours a day and do whatever I want.
And then if somebody walks in with a stolen chainsaw or, you know, a limo or that's probably going to stand out to you. You probably would say, hey, that's kind of suspicious, where'd that come from? But, you know, the that's a good point. Where are you encouraging these people to go during the day?
That was my question.
I mean, you're talking seven thirty to ninety seven in the morning, a lot of hours during the day, where are they supposed to go?
Good question. To me, that's part of where that phase two might be helpful. Because if they're involved in volunteer work, if they're involved in ongoing education.
Trying to give a job.
Yeah, if they're involved in some drug rehabilitation programs and such, that's going to take care of some of those hours. The other thing that I found working at the warming station is those residents have been really good to work with. Yes, I know a lot of them have criminal backgrounds. I know a lot of them have unsavory backgrounds. And yet, when I start to vacuum in the morning to clean up, they'll go, hey, Kathy, let me take care of that cleaning up. Or, oh, I'll take the trash out, you know, and they'll pick up stuff outside. And I think looking at how neat and clean this site was, to me, that was very encouraging because they do take pride in the fact that this is their area. And and so they want it and we can build that in. That can be part of the volunteer work is let's let's keep our neighborhood cleaned up.
I also have some significant concerns about your budget estimation. I, I and John have concern that this isn't sustainable as you projected. The last thing I want to have happen again is to create this wonderful new asset to the community and it falls short because it doesn't have the financial wherewithal to continue. I think Manuel's point is good. There's a lot of desire to help homeless people out there, both from a medical sense, from, you know, churches and religious organizations and and just community agencies, but also state resources that could be applied towards this. It's a big Speaker of the House kind of issue.
Right.
Our governor's hugely supportive of this too, so I think you have, you know, some potential options there to help finance.
And the individual that we have working on that is extremely well versed in tapping into those funds and has the the statewide connections to be able to do so.
I would not want this, though, to be a city project. Meaning this gets started by you, you guys move on at some point and now it falls back on the city. So how do we keep that from being, you know, currently something that the city does budget as a supplement to not making sure that we're fully supplanting all these resources?
I think the key to that is having that diverse board so that the the board has that responsibility rather than just an individual. You know, this isn't a Kathy Lloyd project or Jeff Snow or Mike Atkins project. This is something for our community. And I think there's, I think there's our community has so many good people that would be willing to step up and make sure it's ongoing. I think the other aspect is that, you know, you've got a couple of those eight individuals that have a stake in this. You've got that site manager, you've got that exit homelessness manager, you've got the nighttime person. So there's there's ongoing vested interests that will work towards keeping it alive and well.
As well as through the extra medical. You know, Pastor Dean is with us on YouTube right now. I sent him a text. He's, you know, listening. And we've been working with that, you know, group.
The faith-based advisory group.
Not the faith-based advisory, but the pastors in the in the community. And there's, that's generated a lot of interest. And so the more people we have aligned with this, the better off we'll be. And Kathy, how many pastors did you meet with?
Oh, gosh, I think it was eleven, I think I remember that.
Yeah, eleven or twelve. That before this whole coronavirus.
That has slowed things down though.
Thing came about, we met with them and they're very interested in it personally.
Other questions? I'm looking at the budget, I guess up until now, how much does your organization fundraise up until now?
Okay, so up till now, we haven't advertised, we haven't solicited. And yet I've got seventeen individuals committed to giving the funds to build a hut. And that's without soliciting anything. So the fact that, I mean, today, for the very first time, I put something on Facebook saying, hey, there's a city council meeting, we're going to be discussing this, we'd love to have you participate. And I and I didn't do that till about, I don't know, three thirty this afternoon and my phone has been blowing up with responses. The interest is there, so.
And you know, Ms. Lott, I do agree with you. I know that the interest is there. I guess I just have a few too many concerns and questions up right now. I I really wish that maybe you could have done a little bit of the fundraising prior to this so we could maybe match it or at least have something to go off of. But I just have a few concerns, but I guess I'm very confident that you guys will come back to us with more of our questions answered, with more of our concerns leading.
We actually have raised about thirty, close to thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, because, let's see, so on that, if you look at that budget.
So here's what I'm going to suggest. It's seven o'clock straight up and we're supposed to start our city council meeting at seven o'clock, legally? So this is a very important conversation to us. It's going to be on your agenda items later, so we can bring it back up, the conversation again. If we have, the council has more questions, then you can ask some more public input at that point. One of the last things I would say is, you know, you are asking the city to make a significant contribution. Maybe one of the board members you should have on there in the city council rep or somebody from the city. Just a thought. All right. Thank you very, very much. Very good information. We applaud your effort. This is super exciting for our community and I know the council is going to seriously consider this later in the meeting. So stick around, they'll have more questions for you. Thank you. Yes, thank you, guys. So if you're just now joining us, we are calling the Hermison City Council meeting to order with a declaration of a quorum with all members present. Nice, even during this COVID nineteen situation. So thank you, council members, for showing the community how much of a priority this is in being here in person this evening. We are in a little bit of a unique situation in that we're trying to physically distance people. So we've spread out in a larger environment. We tried to distance people appropriately. We do have two chambers to the room. We have a video presentation as well as a phone-in presentation. So if you're just joining us, we have partnered with Amazon Web Services and the Amazon Chime platform and citizens can listen to the meeting by phone and offer comment remotely by dialing in. One, two oh six, four six two, five five six nine, using meeting ID three two two, nine six two, eight six six seven. And so is the phone system working? We've had people on? Okay, great. So if you would like to participate, there will be an opportunity for you to make public comment during the meeting and we'll take time to recognize those people that are on the phone. So please join me in a.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Again, if you're just now joining us, we had a work session prior to this where the city council has the opportunity to flesh out conversations within the community that maybe need a little bit more detail around them and offer the opportunity to spend a whole hour kind of discussing things of importance to the community. And we heard from a potential project to the community called Stepping Stones, a homeless homeless shelter project that the council will be considering later in the meeting. One of the things I'd like to ask the council to consider in our agenda is that the consideration for stepping stones is like twelve A, which there's a lot of business between now and then. I'm wondering if the council would consider moving that to right before nine or right after nine, I should say, maybe the nine E for consideration, move it up in our agenda so those folks don't have to sit through the whole other business part of our meeting and we can continue that conversation at that point. Would that be okay? It's okay, Gary, I'm not violating anything. No rules are broken. Thank you. Well, thank you. I think that'll be good. So we do have a special guest this evening. Got a special title. Presentation from the Hermison School District. No city council, no Hermison School District meeting?
No.
The board meeting?
No.
Cancelled here?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Mayor, councilors. So yes, tonight actually is the would be the regular work session for the.
Let's introduce you. Let's make sure we have to introduce you. Superintendent of the Hermison School District, Ms. Tricia.
Doctor.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. And doctor.
Thank you.
So welcome. What's going on at Hermison School District?
Councilors. Tonight, yes, it would be the regular work session for the Hermison School Board and those meetings actually happen in buildings. It's the opportunity for building leadership teams to present to the board and share information with the board. So work sessions for this month, any work session items are being moved to the regular meetings. And during this time, the board is holding one regular meeting on the first Monday. So I get to be here this evening. Just want to provide you a little update of where we are as a district with our current situation and school closure. We have passed out over, checked out over twenty four hundred Chrome devices, so Chromebooks, to students to be able to use. Last week, we finally got our routers and hotspots with twenty five routers that our IT department is working on getting out into areas that can reach large groups of students like apartment complexes or parts, places like that. Some are going in homes, maybe that might have a lot of students around them to give students access to the internet. And then we also have forty hotspots that we're able to check out to students who may live farther out and don't have connectivity. So it obviously, in a time when everyone is looking for routers and hotspots, we had to wait a little bit to get ours, but that is great news. We also, as of Friday, have served over forty five thousand meals to our students in our community. And we are, as of today, they're up over two thousand meals per day that are going out. One of the, I guess, things that we're preparing for is as the school year comes to an end, that what would be our traditional school year, we are going to have to transition from the meal delivery routes that we currently have with the buses and staff going out to our regular summer lunch delivery, which will be at sites. So we will expand a little bit, looking at making sure we have a site either Highland Hill Sandstone. So we have something on that side of town. We'll keep something West Quarter for the high school and Sunset. So those, as we get that finalized, we have to work with the Department of Education and get some approvals. But as we get there, we will be doing a large push to get that information out to our parents because that is going to be a huge adjustment for the parents that now are relying on that meal delivery when we can no longer do that. We are starting or transitioning, obviously, not just with the parents, to some online learning opportunities, but also today opened forecasting for eighth through eleventh graders. So they are able to get online and pick their classes for next year, get ready for that. And we will be getting ready for kindergarten registration, which will also be online as we get ready to wrap up this year and look forward next year. We are in a unique spot as a district with our increasing enrollment, having a growing community that has helped us a lot as we look across the state right now and the budget shortfall that is going to be the outcome of COVID nineteen and all the school closures. So a lot still, a lot of good things going on as we look forward to next year. We did sell our bonds. That was actually our original bond sale date was March eleventh. And we got to Portland and got to the office and that was the day that everything fell apart and they said, we're not selling bonds today. But we did finally be able to sell our bonds. So the good news for us is that we got a really good interest rate. So when we get to our next step down, when these last bonds will pay off, there will be a larger decrease for taxpayers than what we had anticipated when we initially went out. So some good news there right now to the bonds. And those projects are going forward. Mayor Goss, we've been a part of the softball field complex, the movement of the softball fields from Rocky Heights to the high school campus. That has to be our first project so that we can start projects over there because the new Rocky Heights will be built on those softball fields. So we are also in a pretty good spot with regard to bond projects because this would be the design phase anyway. So it's been a transition of our meetings from in-person meetings to virtual meetings, but we're still able to move forward. So a lot of moving parts right now in the district. But I'm on the countdown definitely for kids to be back in buildings full time. We are planning some sort of graduation celebration for our seniors that will be still on June fourth. We've been, obviously, with social distancing and other restrictions, there's a lot of planning that goes into that. So we've just been, I have been teasing seniors with emails here and there to let them know June fourth is still our date. Caps and gowns will be handed out to keep them connected and let them know that, you know, we appreciate and I guess empathize with all that they have lost in their senior year. So that is what I have with us in the house.
Yeah, I feel, I feel very sorry about the fact too that our graduation, our seniors are losing out not only on the the kind of milestone of high school graduation that we all hope our kids get through and hopefully some of us got luckily. And, you know, it's kind of a milestone to check off the list as part of who you are and and who you're becoming. And so unfortunately, they won't have a formal process, but hopefully the district can come up with some celebratory. can come up with some celebratory process that is still meaningful and will leave an impression on the student population.
It won't be a group, we won't have all the seniors together in a, in a room like has been traditional, but they will have an opportunity to walk across a stage and be handed their diploma in a cap and gown, and two members of the family, the A or two or three.
Awesome. Awesome. How's food, as far as any food shortages? Have you run into that? And how are you working around all that stuff?
So, there are several, and again, this is, we are, I guess, this is a time when it benefits definitely to be a part of a growing community, because we outsource our food service through chart rolls. We have access to a larger warehouse of food, if you will. There are smaller districts, definitely in Southern Oregon and on the coast, that are struggling because they do their own food service. And so, going to grocery stores and Costco and trying to get the items that everyone else is out there trying to get as well. But we are in a good spot, we're still able to get our commodities and fruits coming in. So, that, I think for some of our kids, they probably, some of our kids are probably bored.
Yeah.
Definitely with that lunchbox. We are in a, in a really, a good spot in that we aren't facing food shortage.
Good, good, good. Well, I thank the school district for making sure that we didn't forget about some of those kids. School for a lot of kids is safety and food and shelter, and so, when it's not in place, then we're at risk. And so, I'm glad that you're at least meeting what you can meet in this situation, and continuing to feed them as many kids that are taking advantage of it. How about school this fall? Are we gonna have it?
Yes.
Is it gonna be online or in person?
I am not losing faith that it is going to be in person. I think, you know, and for a lot of our kids, it's the school, they go to school not necessarily for the learning, they go for the connection with adults, and their peers are there, and whatever activities they're included in. And so, they are missing at that, but learning is a byproduct of that, but it's really about their connection with each other and the adults. So, we are looking for ways, definitely, to make sure we're staying connected. You have said we're focusing on compassion and connection over correction, because that's really the important thing and the benefit for our kids is gonna be next fall when we get them that and they know that in a difficult time, these are the people that were there for me, and we will, you know, pick up where we were and be around running and be in a better spot. But, you know, definitely, I mean, keeping in mind that this is something that none of us have ever done before. And so, you know, I think teachers definitely are, you know, feeling like, I have to do this and I have to be perfect at this, but it's, we changed the game basically overnight for our teachers and our kids and our parents. And I think everybody does take village to raise a child, and this is a perfect example of all of us having to pull together to support our kids.
I think it's, it's unique in that, what kind of a one-horse talent, and everybody rallies around the school. And so, when school's not in session, it really leaves a hole in the societal makeup of our community. And so, we do miss the school, and we miss the activities, and we miss seeing the kids, and even the headache that's created at Hermiston, first, for Highland and First Avenue. All the kids out at the lunch shop.
I enjoyed that.
And waiting in line between ten kids and Subway, you know, it's, you know, I miss seeing that, that young activity out in the community. And so, it's sad, and so, I'm anxious for that to get back into place, too.
Well, I think, you know, we had an administrative meeting today and talked again about the fact that we have a lot of, you know, at the secondary level, our kids that are trying to do online learning are also working and watching siblings and doing other babysitting. So, there's that aspect, trying to do school. And then, we have our elementary students who have probably been homeschooled, you know, taught and supported by an older sibling or a babysitter that could be a high school student. So, it is definitely different for all of us, and just, we need to make sure that we stay connected and give each other some grace and, you know, look forward to when we can all be better than.
Construction staying on schedule? Or is it moving ahead of schedule?
Right now, we are on schedule.
So, even with kids out of school, you can't like tear down Rocky Heights?
Well, Rocky Heights wouldn't be torn down for a couple of years anyway. We still need that next year. So, we are, there are some maintenance projects, we had, um, roof, some roof maintenance that had to be done to high school. So, if you've driven by high school, you might have seen somebody up on the roof with a neon shirt and on vest. So, they've been up there doing some work. We've got some of those other projects that we, you know, been able to take advantage of. We have, as per the governor's original order, we are standing ready should our first responders need childcare, so, or keeping in mind where we would have a spot, should that become necessary, but still trying to do some of those other maintenance things that we can work through at this point.
You have any questions from the council? I have a couple of questions. Yeah? So, the, any inclination from the state on what the budget effect is gonna be?
So, it's definitely a political process, I will say that. In the superintendent's meeting Friday, we were told that all state agencies were planning for an eight to half percent reduction over the biennial, which is, since we're halfway through, feels a lot like 17% every year by now.
And then, secondly, I know you guys have put a lot of effort into developing online learning programs and such. Will we be keeping some of that effort moving forward, you know, with online learning so that the next time something like this happens, that we don't have to rush around and develop that, so we have that available?
I, yes, and I think that it would be very likely. At the secondary level, I think there was an easier transition in high school, because there were a lot of teachers that used Google Classroom as a way for students to turn things in. So, I think, yes, some of those cases we'll definitely see when we go back to school, that we'll kind of see a hybrid of what we have and what we're doing now to make that connection. Our biggest hurdle, if you will, is really reliable internet connectivity for all of our, all of our students, even students who would say, yeah, we have internet at home, but when everyone is at home, trying to be on that same internet. So, that's probably our largest hurdle, and that, for us as a community, that's not just a school district issue for us as a community. But we have the devices right now to be one-to-one, so our students can have access to the device. So, I anticipate that what we'll see is some form of what we've been doing and actually what we're doing now with online learning.
I think to John's point, too, about the budget shortfall, I don't know if you guys have planned to budget it, but the corporate activities tax, which is kind of a football right now. The governor said, yes, we're gonna go forward with it, but yes, we're considering whether we're gonna go forward with it. So, been a little teertop going on right now. So, that's a significant amount of money that's supposed to be coming to you guys. So, if that doesn't realize, that's even a bigger hole.
So, we, the district's original, I guess, estimated allocation was about $4.8 million that the district recently ended our plan for.
Annualized?
That, yes, yes. When we looked at planning for that, there is, there are some salaries that are included with that, social work positions, nursing positions. We've worried about some of the kids at middle school and at the high school. What we have done since originally, the, I guess, for several weeks, it feels like Kate Saul, Director of Business Services, and myself have been saying like, okay, okay, because anticipating that is, it is a tax and when people aren't looking. So, we will be able to, we're gonna tighten the belt in other areas. We wanna make sure that we are honoring all the contracts, so any positions FTE that would have been a part of our student investment account, we will be able to keep those people. We felt like, and that, number one, we offer those people contracts, but also, we have the need with our, with our students and we have people working that generates, you know, that benefits the economy and benefits our community. So, we're going to be able to keep all those positions. We'll have to look at other areas where we can tighten the belt. We did have that conversation today as administrative staff, that we're gonna look again at building budget budgets and tighten the belt, but we are going to be able to weather this storm. And really, that is, I guess, a testimony to the board's fiscal responsibility over many years. And, you know, Katie Saul does an excellent job as Director of Business Services, and we have had a biennial reserve fund that has been there, like, just for a situation like this, that we need drawn, that's what we're gonna do. So, we were told on Friday also that it's highly unlikely that there will be any student investment account dollars for schools next year. So, we are planning as if there will not be, but we will get a hold of the positions that we offer.
Good for you, good for your board. Challenging times, you know, when you look at no lottery funds, you know, potentially income taxes going down, potentially property tax, you know, not being paid and what's budgets, potentially no cap tax, the cap tax, I mean, those are significant dollars and figures that could leave huge holes in budgets, not just yours, but ours and all municipal government. So, thankfully, your board positioned you well to have some reserves that you can call back on. Hopefully, it's temporary. Hopefully, we find out.
And part of that, too, is when you're a growing, thriving community that, you know, schools are projected on ABW, and so, when our community is growing, that supports the student investment.
Thank you. Coming to see you. One thing else from the council. We appreciate seeing the head cheese there. That's a special honor to have you here tonight.
I guess I'll see you next month, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at our city council meeting for first opportunity for citizen input. So, those citizens that are here or on the phone that would like to participate, this is the first time to talk to the city, or to the city council about issues that are not on the agenda. We will have an opportunity at each agenda item to speak, so if you want to speak to those agenda items, please wait. But if there's something on your mind you'd like to talk to the council about right now, try to limit your discussion to not more than five minutes. I need a name, an address, and direct your comments to me. So, are there people here in the audience that would like to speak?
Oh, sure.
Nobody?
Nobody.
Okay.
That's your podium.
Okay, there's your podium. There's nobody standing at it for the people on the TV. Okay, so if there is a caller on the line, we will announce your name by the last four digits. You have a comment, if you have a comment, please dial star seven on your phone. Is there anyone on the phone that would like to talk? So, for future agenda items, if you're on the phone and you would like to speak, star seven. All right, so we have a consent agenda item, A through H. One of those I would like to call for discussion, D. Are there any others that the council would like to pull off of the consent agenda?
I'm curious about H.
H, okay. D and H, any others? Okay, can I get a motion to approve all consent agenda items, A through G, except D? So, D and H being pulled.
Some of them.
Then, moved by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Smith, that we approve the consent agenda items as presented, removing items D and H for later discussion. Any comments from the council? Any public comments on any of the consent agenda items? Anybody on the phone? Star seven.
The person ending in 1935.
So, phone number 1935. Go ahead.
Dean Hackett.
Dean Hackett, yes, Mr. Hackett, you're speaking to the consent agenda.
Thank you. I, um, I would like to speak regarding the stepping stone project, and I hope so, if this is the appropriate time.
It's not.
I hope that.
Yes, but it's coming up shortly. Can you hear me, Dean?
Okay. I, I can, thank you.
Yep, it's coming up. As soon as we get done with this business, we'll talk about stepping stones.
Okay, so you'd like to hold it in, okay.
Well, you'll have another opportunity to press star seven in just a second.
I will do that, thank you.
Okay, so, are there any other people on the phone that would like to speak?
Yes, there is another person ending in 7403.
Phone number 7403. You're on? Are you there? So, all right, okay. Anybody else on the phone that wants to speak to the consent agenda items? All right, hearing none. Rule call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Item D, I requested to call because John Douglas, position nine. Typically, when we go through the review process, they come in front of the council initially as a presentation and are reviewed and then approved at the following city council meeting. But if we do that, it's gonna be after our next, or after the budget meeting. So, I'm requesting that the council consider accepting John Douglas as our budget committee appointee for position number nine. And so, the position would go from May 27, 2020 to December 31, 2021.
We just need a motion to waive the rules.
Okay. So, any questions or concerns about that? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, it's my understanding that, that he was on the votes committee, but just forgot to re-up in time.
Okay. I made a motion, David.
Second.
Okay, then moved by Councilor Kerwin, second by Councilor Primmer, that we waive the rules to approve a committee member. Is that appropriate, Karen, for this one situation?
Yeah.
Okay. Any public comment on that? Okay, rule call.
Yes.
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 Yes. So, now we need to approve him? Okay, so, can I get a recommendation to approve budget committee position number nine for John Douglas, term 5, 27, 20 to 12, 31, 21?
So moved.
Then moved by Councilor Primmer, second by Councilor Harden, that we accept the recommendation of budget committee for position number nine, John Douglas. Any public comment on that? Seeing none? Rule call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, that's D. H, Councilor Primmer, you got a question? I just, you know, wanted a little bit more information on the process.
So, this is the property we, we received permission from the council to negotiate and work on, acquiring the property at Gear and Harper. And we requested that initially because it hadn't gotten well in our initial conversations, but we were able to come to a, an agreed-upon price and did that. It is over what the appraisal is, but if, what we agreed on is 95,000, appraisal came in at 65 approximately, we felt like with that, we spent more than 30 in litigation costs. It, it cost us that much to go the process that we did on the water tower, it cost us more than that much. So, we're just recommending that we buy it at that price. We feel like if something he agrees to and that we're comfortable paying, and it will allow us to move forward with the project.
Do you have a question? Does council have any other question? No. Can I get a motion to approve the report of the acquisition of real property for Northwest Gear Road, West Harper Road, and North First Place Real Lines?
So moved.
Second.
Then moved by Councilor Primmer, second by Councilor Davis to approve the acquisition of the real property. Any public comment? Anybody on the phone want to speak to that item?
Sure.
Okay, rule call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Now, we've considered all the consent agenda items. As I've requested, we're gonna move up item 12A, Stepping Stones Homeless Shelter Project.
11A.
What's that?
11A.
Oh, I have 12A.
12.
Okay, so, um, is that accurate? Stepping Stones Homeless Shelter Project? Okay. Mr. Smith?
So, you heard a lot of discussion and an explanation. So you heard a lot of discussion and the explanation of the project. You know, I think this project is something that our community needs. And just, I think at this point, it's, in my mind, it's a discussion of how much can we afford to pay? Or how much do we shift of other things to support it if the council wants to support it? I think this group has done a lot of, you know, the groundwork and, and they, you know, they're here to help answer any of the questions if you want to do that. But, you know, I, I think their request is a little bit high from contribution to the, from the city, but I'd be happy to answer any specific questions from all of you.
So if the council chooses to support this, what are you prepared to say we financially contribute on a front end as well as on an annualized basis?
Well, I mean, based on taking a look at, you know, what we contributed to Martha's House, as far as capital, I think more along the lines of a 60,000 contribution is something that we could work. And then from an annualized, more along the lines of a 30,000 a year contribution. Again, that's a little bit lower than they're requesting, but those could be something that we could do. But the one thing I wanted to, I mean, probably the biggest thing that I, that I would like to request from the council is to put this project where they're requesting to put it is going to change, is going to require some changes to our zoning code. And we need to, I mean, if we, if we didn't, if the council didn't do anything, they would have to pay all the application fees and go, and that's more money out of their pocket. That's something that I think we could, if the council direct us to, we could make the city be the requester, and that would do away with the need for those fees on doing those changes. There's, there'd have to be language change to the code, and then they would have to apply for a conditionally use permit to use that new language. So it's a two-step process.
Does that not have to be done first?
It would, yes.
Okay, so that.
Yes, and that, but that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm kind of asking the council to do tonight. I mean, we could go back to them and work through budget numbers and come back with a different, you know, money proposal, but, you know, I think Kathy even indicated, you know, they're not sure they can, under the need to change all this code with this code language, it may not be ready for this winter. And so maybe the, you know, the warming station is going to need to be operating this coming winter because we can't get all that done in a timely fashion.
And that would give neighbors an appropriate time to speak to a change in code.
Exactly, exactly. So we would go through all the noise-in requirements, we'd have to notify neighbors, all of that.
I think, you know, I think there's, I mean, you can see that there's a need. I think you have to be careful when you do things like this to make sure that you do it. For two, two things have to be done right. The zoning, obviously, is going to be an issue. Because it's just not as simple as allowing a tent. Because each state and each county has different requirements that we'll have to meet. It'll take moments. And then secondly, when you, when you look at budget numbers, I think the budget that's proposed here is probably, it's probably at least 20 to 30% light. I mean, if you, if you look at what costs are going to be around the place, because it's difficult to get volunteers. If you, if you go, you spend any time working in an all-volunteer organization, like I was in the United Way, it's very difficult to get people to volunteer. And the only way to run a place like this and, and, you know, understand that the parts are named and said, one facility hired someone who was a homeless person there to run the, run the facility. But it's going to be difficult to get, to pay someone $20,000 a year to manage it and pay a security guard $40,000 a year to be there all night, 24/7. That's not one position, that's like two or three positions. So then you got to figure that person, people who want $20 an hour jobs, want minus $20 an hour jobs, who want benefits and all that stuff. So I think it's probably better for the council to pursue the zoning changes and the cost to the city and then maybe work with stepping stones or to come up with some budgetary numbers that are along the lines of what they could cost a place.
Would that change your opinion on how much you would support it?
I think.
I mean, thinking back.
I think if it was, I think if it was realistic, then you could probably, as Matt Lo said, pursue some, you know, even you could partner with them and pursue some state funding, federal funding and such to maybe have a better operating, functioning organization that could serve the city long-term versus going into it having an organization that, and I hate to say it, that could fail.
Well, I think, you know, having a community buy-in, a city buy-in, speaking with representatives, you know, at state level, there seems to be a lot of investment down the I-5 corridor for homeless projects. This would be an opportunity for a homeless project on the east side in rural, that they could say that they're spending some dollars on our side of the state as well. And I think there's some partnerships, but that takes time, I agree with you.
Yes, so my, you know, one of the things that I was looking at, I mean, granted, you know, we need to do the zoning thing, I would also look at, or hope that they would look at making this a, a certain time to be self-sufficient as opposed to us paying for it for, in, in, to a T. So, you know, my, my suggestion would be is that, you know, we say a time limit for how long we're going to be supplying funds if we do approve, funds if we even set a time limit to that, be it two years, four years, two years, four years, something along those lines. So we have a, you know, a, they have something, you know, as, as they're working people towards becoming home, home that we would have, you know, they would also have worked towards being self-sufficient.
So, yeah, you can put a timeline on it and ask for an update on an annualized or every-two-year basis and request that they come back every two years for funding, I mean, that would be reasonable. What about other comments from the council?
You know, I, from my ears and the rest of the council, I think all of us are generally very supportive of the idea. It's just how it's presented and, you know, the feasibility of it lasting for a while. I think this project accomplishes a lot of things. When I worked in Grove Court, frequently there's a lot of people that had a lot of homelessness problems. And honestly, I mean, it comes down to, there's employment problems, a lot of different problems. Having a home, even from a lot of the trainings that we've gotten through the National League Cities, having a home on the roof on your head definitely improves your chances of beating, you know, falling back into recidivism over and over again. So I, I think this is very much needed. I guess I just want to make sure, you know, if we do commit, that we're doing it the right way, that we thought about every avenue, that we thought through every source of funding. And I guess I didn't really get a good sense of that. But I, I know, I know Kathy very much, her and I have worked together at the school district. I'm very confident that, that the project will be a success. I just would like to see a little bit more information, a little bit screws kind of, eyes dotted, you know, each day.
The one thing the council could consider is coming out with a vote of acknowledgement that this is important, that it's something that we want to consider and have more information about, and we want to give them kind of a blessing to move forward, you know, trying to make this a reality. And we're there to support them, but we need more information. We need more firm footing. So that's something that you could say, you don't have to approve anything this evening, but at least that would acknowledge that this is something the council supports and would give them some confidence in what they're doing is meaningful to the community, and that should be pursued further. So I think that would speak loudly this evening. So something like that, that you said, you don't have to make a motion to say we'll support this amount of money tonight.
Well, I don't think that we have the facts in front of us to be able to commit to that. Although, you know, it's absolutely a worthy project, very meaningful, and, you know, absolutely has my full support. It's just that I need to see all those, those pieces fall into place first.
And what?
That's why I asked the questions, if they had applied for grants.
Right.
Because when I saw $85,000 plus $40,000 every year, the thing was like, I don't want to put that to the citizens' heads. Yes, I will support the project, but I like to see money in a different way. And I guess we can tell that, you know, not for every single year, we, we, you know, a limit.
So. What are the thoughts about maybe a recommendation and we can allow a public comment after that? Do you want to make a recommendation first, or do you want to hear from the public first?
Well, I think if there's anyone here from the public that would like to speak to it, I think we should do that first.
Okay. We'll take public comment at this time, so if there are people in the audience that would like to speak, please come up to the chair up front. It's our artificial podium. Introduce yourselves by name and address. Try to direct your comments to me and keep them to less than five minutes. Come on, I know some of you guys showed up for this. Who's first? All right. Kathy, come on up. You can stand or sit, whichever you prefer.
I'm not sure. So in terms of money, we actually, as I look at it, we have, we've already raised $65,000. So that covered fencing, it covered leveling the ground and putting the gravel down, you know, smoothing it out. It covers reattaching the modular building that's there because at one point it was blown off of its standards. I left my notes there. We've got the 17 huts pledge. So really, when I look at that initial capital, what we would throw out if, if the city isn't funding and if we couldn't get the grants, is we would throw out the shower unit and the laundry unit. Right now, Boppy House has one female, one male shower in their building. And Kathy Clutman is very anxious to work with us on this project. Ideally, we would have those things. And, and so that's something, you know, that we would, we would look at. But of that initial, you know, we're at 65,000. Have we gone out and applied and such? No. And the reason we haven't is, our main thing is, we need to know whether we're going to be able to get the zoning requirements to be able to put it there. And so we have not moved on anything else, hard and firm, because to us, that is the first step, is to get approval from the city council to be able to put this project there on that property. And for us, that's the first step before we can apply for multiple grants and such. I'm pretty, I feel pretty comfortable, I'm sure we have working for the grants, but we can't turn them loose until we know that we actually have a project.
Are there others that would like to speak? Come on up, Nathan.
All right, good. Nathan Crowder, again, West End, it's Al. Our business is Northwest Farm Supply, our main business in terms, and obviously, we're limited. But we've seen in the last couple of months, since the coronavirus thing has become an issue, major uptick in shop foot. And with that, we're in the process of spending $15,000 for our green grant runs and that kind of thing to try and minimize, at least the risk to us as a business. I don't know a lot about the project that's been proposed, I'll give you a little bit about it just briefly. But I think that the concept is something that we all have responsibility for in some form. I like the idea of having the council consider, make some decisions that are based on, how do we help with that problem without it being something that's going to be a long-term burden on the city or on the community collectively? Not asking for an answer tonight at all, but simply saying that as a business owner, that's a concern to us. I visited Derek Quick, right, who happens to be one of the security system in our case, and asked him what he's running through, and he said it's a flood of shop that produced in the last month. He mentioned specifically a couple grocery stores that haven't had it, and have had to go to it. In just a week's time, a vaccine alone at the end of $1,000 just disappeared. And it's, we have a pattern, even if by year, we haven't seen enough, it certainly had a list. In my mind, I would just assume going through something like that as having to check every single person in our street building. It's just the nature of the business in that sense. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Others in the audience? I know there's a couple people online that wanted to speak to this, so if you would press star seven, we'll identify you by phone number.
You have the speaker ending in 1-9-3-5.
1-9-3-5, you're up.
Yes, thank you. I'm Dean Hackett, and I live at 114 North Beach, 11th Place, here in Arlington.
Thank you.
Yes, I, I really appreciate it's the council considering this, and I appreciate that you're moving slowly, considering it slowly, and looking at several facets of it. As, as a clergy, I certainly have concerns for, for the need. But as the citizen, I also have the concern. I'm working with the homeless that they have in the past, and working in some of the shelters. And my son has been a director for a homeless shelter in Clackamas. We, we have first-hand experience. And the sort of concerns that I have looking at the project is, one, is this going to become a magnet that will draw homeless from nearby communities and particularly from across the river? So that's going to increase the number of homeless that we've got. But I work with that being here, and what is that going to do to our, the panhandling situation in our community? From 7:40 till registration at 9:00, 7:30, are they going to be on our community's fences? Are, you know, are we going to get increased with panhandling? I, yes, and I, I think, I think that those questions need to be explored more deeply and, and that, that you guys understand and our other social services in the community, I, I think needs to be explored, what, what are the principles of that? I, I would hold that security would be looked at stronger for, for the community, particularly where we're looking at, at the housing units that could be up from Gear Road, from where they're talking about, and I think, I think that needs to be looked at. I, I just think there are a number of aspects in, in the project that has not been answered yet, at least. So, in, in my mind, it's not that, and I, I, I was just, it's a little bit, for, for the clergy that's dealing with Kathy, and, and I'm not saying I'm completely against the project, I just think, I think there are aspects that is not, that's adequate to be addressed that we need to look at and, and address. And, and I hope that there was, that there would be some really, really good addressing of that, the bettering of the people, and ensuring that this is, is just a very additional increase. And, and the drug issues in our community, I, I just have a question. And so I, I really appreciate that you're moving that slowly. And so I, I really appreciate that you're moving that slowly, and I was hoping that a part of your decision tonight would be asking the, the board to do some more exploring in these particular areas and bring back some more definitive answers that we could look at.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Okay, are there others on the phone that would like to speak?
There is caller ending at two eight zero two.
Two eight zero two.
Yes.
Hello? Yes.
Hi, my name is Kathy Putnam and I live at Seventeen Southwest Burge, Hermiston, and I am the interim director of Agapi House. When this stepping stone project was first brought to our board, we had a lot of concerns. Again, like the packets just mentioned. However, after one of our board members went over to Walalala and visited, unannounced, and saw what their homeless shelter was like, he came back with a glowing report. We see homeless on a daily basis. There definitely is a need. We have showers in Agapi House that are used daily by homeless people because there is nowhere else for them to be. As you probably are aware, we have Martha's House, which is a family shelter, but we only have nineteen rooms and they are geared towards families. This shelter would be geared for adults that don't necessarily have families with them, and I really feel like creating it as a project that helps people move forward rather than just giving them housing is going to key to this success. But more importantly, I feel that the city council should really consider looking forward with the zoning at this time. I can understand you want more permission, but while that's gathered, more and more people are going to be sleeping in the streets where we could be helping them sooner to get that zoning that's being carried now.
Kathy?
And each home should have a, a different reason for being homeless. It's not always drugs. It's not always that they've done something terrible in their life. There are good people that are homeless and we need to remember that we're here to help everyone. And as far as the temperature, because people are sleeping in their cars or in campers right now without electricity, it still can be out on the street. So our board has voted in favor of working with this committee to move forward with stepping stones, and I'm hoping that the city council will help with this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Are there others on the phone that would like to speak?
That was it.
Okay. Nobody else in the audience? All right, so who would like to make a recommendation?
I'd like to recommend that this does move forward with the zoning requirements and we get started on the, and we consider this project as something that we want to have more information on.
So it's been moved by Ms. Davis, Mr. Barrow, that we move forward with looking to change the zoning for the property that Stepping Stones wants to be on and that it would be initiated by the city to help offset the costs of the project and that we continue to look forward to partnering with Stepping Stones to flesh out more details and present a more firm budget and city manager comes back with some proposals or recommendations that he could support financially. That's a little bit more lengthy than what you guys said. That's a question I was going to ask about the zoning. Is it possible to, and I think with zoning, you have to be careful, so reading through some of this paperwork before the meeting today. They were, they allowed tents as emergency shelters and commercial zones. So that would therefore indicate that any commercial zone could allow a tent as a nervous shelter. So I think you have to be careful in zoning changes. If you do pursue this to only change zoning in that sector for this.
Well, what we would, what we would be doing is we would first consult our planning zoning attorney who works with us on this to try to craft the language as narrowly as possible, and, and we would looking to make this a conditional use permit type of a thing, so they would have to ask for permission to do it. It wouldn't be an outright right to do it. So they all, any group would always have to get permission from the planning commission to do it. So that's the, that's the approach that we've been looking at. Did I say anything wrong, Clint?
No, we want to be sure that we protect all of our employment lands and don't open them up to any form of housing. So anything that we were going to create would be a strict text amendment to permitted uses within strictly the light industrial zone so that it would only affect the light investor properties, commercial properties wouldn't be affected. And then we would also be looking at putting really strict sideboards on it so that it might have to be in conjunction with nonprofit ownership, things like that, so that we can really keep our industrial supply protected.
Good point, because you, you wouldn't want a business to start putting a bunch of tents in their parking lot because they're bringing a bunch of people in here for, you know, workforce, and now you've got all these tents popping up everywhere around town. So, you know, making sure that it's really, really restricted to just that space as much as possible.
And just to meet the need that we're talking about, homelessness, not to try to meet other needs from the houses.
Okay, so Gary, do I need to rephrase that or?
No.
No, we got it all. We gotta sharpen it up more. All right, any other public comment on that recommendation? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. I don't know how many Stepping Stones folks are still here, but thank you, congratulations. Keep moving forward. We look forward to fleshing this project out and working with you on it. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so now we're back to our regular agenda. So now we are at item ten, public hearings. There's a public hearing for proposed supplemental budget for the city of Hermiston fiscal year July first, two thousand nineteen, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest on the council? Seeing none, hearing guidelines will now be presented by city staff.
City council is holding a public hearing regarding the proposed supplemental budget for fiscal year July first, two thousand nineteen to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. The city council will take public testimony on this issue and make a decision at this meeting. The hearing process will begin with a staff report by finance director Mark Krosick. Following presentation of the staff report, the city council will take public testimony. Testimony will be received by supporters of the proposal first, followed by neutral testimony, and then opponents of the proposal will testify. The council requested all people wishing to testify approach the microphone and give their name and mailing address before testifying, since it's pre-COVID. People wishing to testify should leave a testimony to not more than five minutes unless the longer period is provided by the city council, but the testimony will be accepted from all parties. After everyone wishing to testify, it's had an opportunity to speak, the city council will close the public hearing and enter deliberations. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony will be received.
Thank you. We are now going to open the hearing, and two staff will now present their reports. Mr. Krosick?
Strutting on up here, take your time.
Well, I'm just ready to hear everything by here. I got something going on. You have in the resolution and, and your packet, the dollar amount involved and the various aspects of what we're asking for from the seven funds that are affected. I don't want to take the time of the council to rehash all the uses of the funds we're asking for. I would just stand for any questions you might have if you care to address specific issues in any of the funds involved.
Council, do you have any questions about any specific funds that were mentioned in the supplemental budget or what we're doing? I don't have any questions, but you state the totally.
Didn't bring that with me.
It's one point three million dollars, two point four percent of our overall.
Overall budget. It's common for us to do supplemental budgets.
Correct. We typically do one every year at this time to kind of catch up on different projects, things we didn't anticipate. We may have in early next year, I'll kind of talk about that in my report, but we may have an additional next year just that we won't know some things.
And we said earlier, that means like after July, July first.
I'm sorry, is this a, so we got July one nineteen to June thirty, two thousand twenty? Or is it just February twenty-one?
Yeah, twenty-one. This is.
This is just this fiscal year. After July one, we're in fiscal twenty-one, and that's where we're going to probably hack, but not probably, we will.
That's what he was talking about the next year.
Yeah, exactly. Instead of waiting to the spring, when they need to ask for them in the summer.
In the July.
In the July.
Depending on how often we're meeting.
Right.
Counselor has a question.
What's the difference on this and supplemental budget number two?
This is supplemental budget.
This is, this is number two. Number one, we had asked you earlier this fiscal year to do some cleanup on historical issues that was virtually just an accounting exercise that we wanted to get out of the way before we got to this.
This is number two. Yes.
And so the resources that we're looking to expand are funds that we have on hand.
Yes.
That are coming out of mostly reserves and some.
Continuances.
Continuity funds. Okay, so these are already currently in our budget. It's not like we found some new money. We're just reallocating them so that they line up for budgeting purposes. Is that fairly accurate?
That would be a very good summation, yes, sir.
And it's typical of every city council, probably across the nation, they go through some sort of budget. We can crystal ball the budget, you know, now for next year as much as possible if things change. You know, who would have known COVID-19 would have been here this spring? So, you know, we'll have some changes probably next year as well that we'll have to budget for, so this is a fairly normal project for us. Any other questions by the council? Okay, so thank you for your report.
Certainly.
Keeping it concise, I appreciate that. All right, so now we're on to the public testimony part. Are there any persons who wish to comment? We will now allow callers also to comment for public comment. So is there anybody here in the audience that would like to comment? We're going to take proponents first. Nobody? Any neutral parties? Any opponents? Okay, how about callers? Is there anybody on the phone that's a proponent? What's that? Any neutral parties? Any opponents? Okay, callers will now be muted. This hearing is now closed. Any further council discussion? Can I get a motion to approve the staff report?
It's been moved.
Been moved by counsel Harden, sent by counsel permanent, that we approved the staff report as presented. Gary, do I need to take public comment on that? Approving the staff report, no? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously, so this will be up for consideration later.
Correct, the resolution to adopt that.
All right, we're going to move on to ordinance number twenty-three oh two, amending chapter one thirty-six of the code ordinance is entitled Code Hearing Officer. So I'm guessing that a lot of these that we're looking at are just continuance changes to our code that we're looking to amend or approve?
These first two are, yes.
Okay. And who's leading?
So on the hearing officer, this was, as our outside counsel was looking at the overall, how we handle appeals when somebody is, you know, given a citation or, or other things that they might appeal, it wasn't a standard process as far as a hearing officer. Now, there's, some of those things go directly to municipal court and they're dealt with in that way, but there are also things that go to a hearing officer. And currently, Mr. Morgan has been functioning as that, but this ordinance brings into one place a process, so we know what we're doing to follow it and we can be a little more consistent as we apply it throughout the code. So it, it isn't changing any of our practices, it's merely really codifying what we do and being more clear about it rather than having to look in this chapter and this chapter and this chapter. That would be the answer to your question.
Any questions from the council? Okay, may I request first reading of the ordinance be read by title only, pause for roll call? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lucy?
The first reading of ordinance number twenty-three oh two, an ordinance amending chapter one thirty-six of the Hermiston Code Ordinance is entitled Code Hearing Officer.
May I request that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting and the second reading be by title only and pause for roll call and roll call.
Yes.
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 Mr. Lucy?
The second and final reading of ordinance number twenty-three oh two, an ordinance amending chapter one thirty-six of the Hermiston Code Ordinance is entitled Code Hearings Pause.
Can I get a motion that ordinance number twenty-three oh two be adopted and become effective thirty days after adoption by the city council? Been moved by counsel Davis, sent by counsel Smith, that will approve twenty-three oh two and become effective thirty days after adoption. Any public comment in the room? Seeing none, we'll move on to phone. Are there any callers on the phone that would like to comment? Please push star seven. Uh, so no comment? No roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Ordinance number twenty-three oh three, amending code of the ordinance, adding chapter one thirty-nine, entitled Administrative Warrant.
Okay, so similar situation. In the past, there's been in different sections of the code, there's an ability to get an administrative warrant, not one issued by a judge, but a warrant that could be issued from an administrative position. And it's only limited to certain things, but our legal counsel recommends that it become one process. So the process would be you have to have permission or approval of the city manager or the police chief to apply for the warrant in the first place, and then you, you would apply it into a judge to ask for this warrant, but it's not based on any criminal activity, it's based on violation of the code section, which is a criminal. So then you go through the process that you have to explain why you're getting it, what, you know, code sections and, and some other information about the violation that we're talking about. It just lays out again a process that we can follow without having to go to different sections to get this together.
So explain to me a situation where this would be.
So, yeah, a building code violation, the, the odor issue that we dealt with could have been done under it. In fact, I think we did use an administrative warrant the first time we went to inspect the property.
So this isn't giving more power to the city manager that he has to, to use all these warrants?
We still have to go to a judge at some point, but this allows the process internally to, to get there.
So when you say they seek the city manager or police chief's approval, that could be anybody within the city or anybody?
Any staff person.
Okay, so Lily says, hey, I don't like the way Dave's fence looks. He goes, she goes.
She could, and then we could say, yeah. Maybe.
Okay, so they got to come to you, you have to approve it, then it's got to go to a judge.
Right.
And the judge has to approve it. So this isn't just the city manager telling everybody what to do.
Right, it's, it's trying to set up a process that's more orderly.
Got it. All right, any other questions on this? May I request first reading of the ordinance be read by title only?
Uh, may I request first reading of the ordinance be read by title only and calls for roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Luiz.
First reading of ordinance number 2303, an ordinance amending the Hermiston Code of Ordinance by adding chapter 139 entitled Administrative Warrant.
Mr. Mer. May I request that the ordinance be put on for final adoption at this meeting and that the second reading be by title only and calls for roll call. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Luiz.
The second and final reading of ordinance number 2303, an ordinance amending the Hermiston Code of Ordinance by adding chapter 139 entitled Administrative Warrant.
Mr. Mer. Can I get a motion that ordinance number 2303 be adopted and become effective 30 days after adoption by the city council? Then moved by Council Harden, seconded by Council Smith, that we approve ordinance number 2303, or that become adopted and become effective 30 days after adoption by the city council. Any public comment? Anybody in the room? Anybody on the phone? Press star seven? Seeing none? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 2145 FAA Apron Design Grant.
Yes, so Mr. Morgan, I hope you're back there.
He's coming. Alright. He's got a slow walk up here too. What's up with you guys today? It's a marketing. Too cold to move fast in there.
It's frozen.
So this issue for you this evening with the apron issue, so we have been planning this project for a number of years. It's in our capital improvement plan, it's been accepted by the FAA. I just received our fee proposal from our design engineers. It's actually right around $180,000. We're asking for authorization up to 225, so we don't need quite that much. But the city typically required to provide 10% local match towards our federal grant funding. So the FAA was going to be providing approximately $160,000. We would have to come up with about $18,000. But with the CARES Act, the FAA is funding all grants that are approved for this federal fiscal year at 100%. So we're not going to have to come up with our local match for that project. Unfortunately, the downside of this is that this project had been split into two pieces. And so the construction piece is scheduled to be occurring next federal fiscal year, so the fiscal year that starts October 1st. If that had been this fiscal year, we would have our entire project, construction included, funded 100%. So I guess we'll just have to be happy with the $18,000 that we're getting. Thank you. Anything else? Questions from the council? Okay, can I get a motion to approve resolution 2145 and lay it upon the record? So.
Second.
Then moved by Council Curran, seconded by Council Perman, that we approve resolution number 2145 FAA Apron Design Grant and lay it upon the record. Any public comments? Anybody in the audience? Anybody on the phone? Star seven?
None.
Okay. Seeing none? Uh, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, resolution number 2146, supplemental budget number two, fiscal year 2020. So you guys already saw this, heard this one earlier. Question, bud? Comments? Can I get a motion to approve resolution number 2146 and lay it upon the record?
Someone?
Second.
Okay. Then moved by Mr. Gettiere, seconded by Council Perman, that we approve resolution number 2146 and lay it upon the record. Any public comment? Anybody in the audience? Anybody? Nobody? Okay. Anybody on the phone? Star seven?
None.
Okay. Uh, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 2147, initiate vacation of East Ridgeway Avenue. Mr. Smith.
Yes, so in December of last year, the planning commission approved 199 unit manufactured dwelling park. On a portion of that property that we just rezoned from industrial between Diagonal and 10, and it's south of Elm as well. So as they've been going through the planning process, part of that come up, that a portion of East Ridgeway Avenue, or the right of way for East Ridgeway Avenue, is kind of in the middle of their development. And that's not been developed. It's not anything that we would use at this point with the way they're proposing to do it. So we're initiating the vacation of that right of way. It's 526 feet between Northeast 8th and East Diagonal Boulevard. And it's currently undeveloped. And as, just as an informational item, they're dedicating some of their land to, to East Ridgeway to, right on the end, to make a connection with the existing neighborhoods.
That was my question. So East Ridgeway looks like it's a regular sized road, and their map kind of looks like it cuts off part of that road. Does that create like an alleyway? Or what is that going to be afterwards?
They'll be widening. That dedication will widen that out to the 60 feet right in front of those houses.
Okay. So they'll have access like they would have that street with it? It's like a dirt alley right there, right?
Yeah, there's, there's not much there. It's just a go-trail.
And so the city doesn't believe they have any intent of extending that road all the way through to connect with that?
When we actually went through the rezoning process, we hired a traffic engineer to look at the overall circulation of that area. And the way that Ridgeway and Diagonal intersect cannot ever be a safe intersection. So the recommendation of the rezoning process was probably at some point to vacate this portion of the street.
Alright, any other questions? Counselor? Okay, can I get a motion to approve resolution number 2147 and lay it upon the record? Second. Then moved by Council Burrow, seconded by Council Kerwin, that we approve resolution number 2147 and lay it upon the record. Any public comment? Anybody in the room? Daniel, is there anybody out there that?
Just, just city staff.
Just, okay. So star seven, anybody on the phone still? No public comment? Okay, hearing none. Uh, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Resolution number 2148, authorize the city manager to apply matching funds for the development of a skateboard in Teed Adventure Park, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, so in, at your spa- at your place this evening, there was an updated version of the resolution. There was some changes that the state wanted. Uh, let's see. It's in the whereas, um, language.
There's a lot of whereas.
There were whereas.
That's five of those.
It was, let's see.
Climate's the main priority.
It's a what?
The maintenance clause.
Maintenance clause.
The third.
The third whereas, yes. So basically, we applied last year for some of these funds. We're not awarded. We're going back. This time, there are two different pots of money that we can apply for, we're applying for both. And if we were to get both, we may not need as much matching money, but basically, they need to know that, that we've talked to you about using this matching money to build this park. So that's why we're asking for the resolution. It will go along with our application package.
We already have these funds set aside for this purpose.
Yes.
They're still in reserve.
They still are.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I need to reread the resolution, Gary, since it wasn't part of the normal package? The one that the community in the public? Once in a while I play one of them. No, we need to stay the holiday.
It's, it's one about maintaining.
Whereas the city is committed to maintaining the completed Teed Adventure Park is one of the many public parks in Hermiston. That's what we added.
So we've moved to amend the.
Resolution.
To amend the resolution as, as attached to the agenda or Nova staff reports to include this. Paragraph about whereas the city is committed to maintaining the completed Teed Adventure Park. No.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. Make a motion if it sounds like that. Okay. Go second. Go second. You can't move your mouth now because you're too cold, huh?
It's too cold.
Then moved by Council Perman, seconded by, head not by Council Myers, uh, that we approve resolution number 2148 as amended from the council packets. Any public comment? Anybody on the phone? Star seven? None listening. Okay. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Hopefully, we get this one to go through. It'd be exciting to see that Teed Adventure Park. And I know it was disappointing last year to not get that funded, so hopefully this year we have better luck.
Yes.
Uh, resolution number 2149, CARES Fund, Mr. Smith.
Yes, so in the CARES Act, there was a set of funds allocated to airports. And our portion of that was $69,000. And even though our congressional delegation said we've received this money in the newspaper, which should be true, right? But they, we have to go through an application process to get it, so we're asking for authorization to apply for this money that we've been told we already have.
Ask for more.
I'd like to ask for as much as penalty got, but.
Right. I made, I made a motion to approve this resolution. Then moved by Council Perman, seconded by Council Davis, that we approve resolution number 2149. Any public comment? Seeing none? Star seven on the phone? No comment. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Smith, I gotta believe they can just keep threatening more money, so it'll be better.
Uh, I'm just, yeah. We're hoping more falls from the sky.
Right. On an airport.
Yeah, on an airport anywhere. We don't care where it falls.
Resolution number 2150, supporting the League of Oregon Cities Bylaw Revision to Create a People of Color Caucus. Who wants to speak at this one?
Well, I don't know if Mr. Barone does, but we, we brought this forward as, at his request and, and so it's something that our, that the League of Cities Board has already discussed at one point. And if we get to meet again in the future, I think we'll discuss it further.
Mr. Barone, you guys have thoughts about it?
No, I think last conversation that we had and even the staff report itself really says it all. I would really love to support the council to support the League of Oregon Cities to create the People of Color Caucus on the state level. I think it's a great opportunity for a lot of people of color to be able to participate and feel that their voices are heard as well. Sometimes you don't really get that, just being in the whole public group as a whole. So it's really nice to be in constituency groups, just like the National League of Cities does. Where you feel really comfortable, a lot of the ideas that you share, a lot of the colleagues are like-minded. But I think this would be a really good stepping stone also for people of color to, to also get more power back in their local government. But I have a lot of good things to say about it. I really don't think it's bad.
I think the city of Hermiston has long appreciated and respected all the peoples of color so much that we just replaced our first sign as an inclusive community with a brand new sign that says we're an inclusive community and building an inclusive community. And we're nationally recognized for developing a Hispanic advisory council. So we've long supported engagement from all citizen groups in our community. And so I fully support the idea of developing a People of Color Caucus that provides a different avenue or a different venue for people engaged with the league of cities and participate on the state level. So any other comment from the council? Any motions?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 21.
Second.
Then moved by Council Kerwin, seconded by Council Harden, that we approve resolution number 1150. Any public comment?
He's glad.
Sound travels slowly. I can't hear you. Cold, colder air. Takes longer to get over there. Public, public comment? Anybody on the phones? Star seven? Hearing none? Uh, roll call. Hold on, let's stop. Star seven.
Caller ending in six, eight, nine, five.
Six, eight, nine, five. You're up.
This is Virginia, 45, Houston Drive, some extent, just to let you know, this is the first time I've done this program. Just trying to stop with, with the meeting here, and I keep coming through.
Thank you, Virginia. It's good to see you, or hear from you. I'm guessing it's Virginia Garcia. Virginia Rome.
Rome.
Garcia. Virginia Rome. Okay. Alright. Well, Virginia, thank you for participating this evening. Uh, roll call. Roll call. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion passes unanimously. We've already done 12A, we're going to move on to 12B, March 2020 Finance Report. Make it as quick as your last one.
Whoa. Where did?
Just, just go.
Yep. What we have is a normal process. Page two of your packet is the Urban Renewal Agency status. He's actually made more money in tax revenue for the district than what we planned on already, so.
Go get the lights. We can see it.
They were going real well. Page three, we have our general fund resources. There we go. Where's our clicker? Is it not working?
We don't have enough.
You have to click it for me. Actual revenue for March was $284,000. I think this is the first time we will see a little effect of COVID-19 because this is. I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus over here. That's, that's messed up my equilibrium. I can't, I can't say we are low on resources because of any one thing. It's all across the board of all of our miscellaneous revenue. I'm, I'm not sure what's going to happen in April because I don't see anything to indicate there's going to be a big disparity between what we forecast and what we think is going to happen. I don't know how to predict this, to be honest with you, all of our miscellaneous revenues. So I would just tell you that's, we're down. I can't give a specific reason. I can't identify one area of operations that is mainly responsible for that. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Then we go, that's turn the lights off, I can't read my notes. Uh, we go over to general fund expenditures. Next one. There we go. You will see that we are $243,000 in the red over budget for the month. If I could have my note pop up. Expenses were 1,000, 1,337,000. They were budgeted at 1134. This happens because we moved $450,000 of the fundland insurance money out of the general fund into the fundland fund, getting ready to have to pay the 50% down for the fundland equipment. Absent that, we were actually $927,000 under budget, which is a savings of $207,000. I expect that level of savings for the rest of the year in the general fund, somewhere in that neighborhood. It's just this month, we, we had to move the 450 so that we can make the payment for the fundland equipment that was necessary. That has to be done before we can move forward. Look at our general fund balance going forward. Uh, April, we projected a balance of 3574. You can see we ended up, well, I'm sorry, we, we projected 4154 and. I'm sorry, that's totally wrong again. 4518, we projected, 4154 net. We missed our guess for the month end of the general fund by 364,000. We are still 2.2. We are still two-point-two ti- nine times the minimum reserve requirement. I'm very confident that with continued savings on the expense side, we will be in good shape to enter into the fiscal year July one. I wanted to bring up, you have not seen the Utility and Street Funds Report in a while, but it's looking very positive. I think our forecast of what's going on here is pretty good. On our resource side, we're a little bit ahead. On our expense side, all funds are a little below projections. Uh, we do have the HES Fund, some of his expenditures, he's spending a little quicker than we thought he was. But other than that, all of our utility and street funds are doing well for this, this point in time in the fiscal year. The capital projects report, two of these are gonna be gone next month. The West Hermiston Overlay and the Northeast Water Tank will be gone. We only put Hermiston Overlay here 'cause we finally paid the retainage. It's now officially closed. And the Northeast Water Tank will be closed in April. It, we're told uh been operating off gravity feed. It's ninety percent complete. Now all that's left to do is pay the retainage. And we have the and I messed up on this last month. I'm gonna say cut five.
Very good.
Better by this time. That's close to being completed as well. And then we have everything else on schedule with the Airport Master Plan Project. Okay? And finally, on, on our investments, this is where we'll see a big impact, although it won't be a lot of money on a percentage basis. It will be, if I could have you put up the commentary. There will be changes in our portfolio in April. The Fannie Mae at one-fifty, if you could hit the button one more time. That has been called effective today. You'll see it's at one-point-five. When we turn around to try to reinvest that, it will be somewhere in the point-six to point-seven range. It's cut in half. Also, too, the Federal Home Loan Bank at one-sixty-five. If I could have you click it again. That has been called effective on Wednesday. So we will in effect have almost a million-one being called early in a market that's in a down position. And I'm down, I'm staying underwater on agencies and securities from the government. Everything's upside down there right now. We are in no hurry to pick a fund or or an instrument to invest in because we're trying to figure out still, is the market gonna be depressed for a long time? Over twelve months? Or is this going to be one that has a slow rebound in six to nine months? So we're gonna try to figure out how we can keep this short. We will make money. It will not be to that extent. I wanted to make the council aware, that's the situation we're looking at. I have no doubt we will see some other government agencies called between now and the end of May because they're doing their job. They're looking at the market that rates are really low, just like you would refinancing a house in a low-rate environment. They're looking to lower their cost of borrowing as well.
When you say called, does that thing go away?
Yes.
Okay.
They have. As of today, we got basically two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in cash.
Okay.
They paid us off. And on Wednesday, we'll have eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand and some change in cash. Uh, working with our advisor to figure out what's the best way to do this because we can do it in one fell swoop. And make a guess, we might be right, we might be wrong. Or we can do it little pieces and spread the paint around.
Why don't you stick it in the LGIP short term?
I'm glad you asked that. Our investment policy says we cannot have more than thirty-five percent of our investable funds in corporate bonds. If I take a million dollars out of agencies and stick it into LGIP, that thirty-four percent is going to go up to somewhere on the order of fifty percent. I will be in violation of our policy.
LGIP is all invested in corporate bonds?
Oh, LGIP is invested in a number of things. Not just corporate bonds. They're in distressed assets, they're in real estate trusts, they're in government securities, they're in pension funds. They're all over the board. The issue for me is, by our policy, anything in the LGIP counts against that thirty-five percent corporate bonds that we hold individually. And if we, if you would want me to do that, and I can do that, we would have to look at some of these bonds and the corporate bonds and sell them. And probably not at a loss, but long-term, we will not recognize the revenue that we would have on them. If this becomes a long-term situation, absolutely, I will go to the LGIP and I will bring to the council a recommendation that you make an exception policy for that action.
There's a reason we got the policy in place, so I'm not sure that that's something.
Well, I think we'll take a look at it. If we, if it looks advantageous, we bring it back.
It, it's something we can do if you allow me to have the exemption for a time without eliminating or selling some of the corporate bonds at a perceived loss. That's my concern.
You buy corporate bonds long-term investment?
Yes, we do.
You sell them?
Well, these bonds are at a rate that I'm gonna earn that for the life of the bond unless it's called.
Right.
If I sell it now, I will get less value for that investment than if I hold it to maturity. That's the issue. And that could be a significant number. I haven't looked to see what it is on any of these issues. But yes, we, we do buy the corporate bonds long-term. We also have to worry about the weighted added maturity in the portfolio if we do this as well. So there's some things in the investment policy that we would bump up against to just dump it in LGIP because my knee-jerk reaction is to do just that.
So leave it in checking account until you figure something out?
It's, it's in the checking account right now until we figure it out.
Yes, sir.
And with that said, that's all I've got this month unless you have questions.
The other question I had, maybe Mr. Smith, you can answer this one, is East Theater Lane project back on now?
Yeah, Mark, did they get that this week?
Washington went back work construction.
Well, they, they came back earlier.
Yeah, so they were paving out there on East Theater today, so they, I don't know if they finished the entirety of the paving today or not, but they.
It looks pretty much like it's done.
Yeah, so they're doing it in two panels for the whole length of it with two lifts, and so I think they're about three-quarters done. I think they still have one panel, one lift to do, that they'll finish up tomorrow. So we're hoping to have traffic on there by the end of this week or whatever. So.
What about the other side?
The speed limit is twenty-five.
Yeah.
Right. What about West Theater Lane?
Yeah, what about the other side of the area?
Yeah, so West Theater is a little bit further behind, so again, that's a project that's being done by the product developer that's just north of there. So we are partnering with them to get the entirety, the entire width reconstructed. So they're leading that project. So they're doing some underground uh utility work still. So they're running into some challenges with the Hermiston irrigation.
The canal.
Canal, so. Get some good layers.
The water table's a little high right now. Interesting. So that project, though, even though people can drive on it, won't be completed?
For the East Theater?
East Theater?
Yeah. Well, the, the project will be completed. There'll be some minor punch with that, but yeah, it'll be.
So no, there are side blocks or any of that.
That comes in as the development happens along. They'll fill in the curb gutter and sidewalk.
So you'll notice that, like, right there at East Theater, where Semir on Terrace subdivision, there is curb and gutter and sidewalk along the south side there because they went in and put that in. But our portion of the project was just to do the center two travel lanes for the entire length. So when the school district constructs that new school, those types of things, they'll finish off their rest of the paving and do the curb and gutter and sidewalk.
Be striped?
Yep, it'll be striped.
Awesome. And potentially done by this week.
Yes. And we're gonna have the speed limit signed?
Just a warning. If you run off of that road with no gutters, you're in the sanddude.
Yeah.
I'm sure you don't.
Oh, yes.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Cross? Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'm next up too, so I'll play for you all. So can I get a motion to accept the financial report as presented? So. Been moved by Councilor Kerwin, seconded by Councilor Primmer, uh, that we approve March twenty-twenty financial report. Any public comment? None. Star seven, anybody on the phone? Public comment? Seeing none? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, explanation of overhead cost allocation methodology. Mr. Paper?
You should have a piece of paper that looks like this in your packet. I thought I gave it to.
You have, Mr. Barone? Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the budget.
Does everybody have that? Okay. So if you look at the top, you will see a number of staff member names on the left side. Mr. Morgan, myself, Ms. Alarcon Strong, Crystal Linters, so on and so forth. Prior budget years, we have taken salaries for these employees that are listed and split them between sometimes the general fund and enterprise funds or their total salary was split to an enter- enterprise fund on some basis for which I can find no justification. As an example, if you look at my salary, my time, I was ten percent in finance, six percent with Hermiston Electric Services, forty-two percent recycled water, forty-two percent in the water fund.
So that's the old.
That's the old methodology.
Currents.
Okay? So we decided, and Councilor Smith, I mean, sorry, City Manager Smith and I were both like, this has got to be confusing to the citizens to look and see finance only having X number of dollars when really there's five bodies in finance and only one of them is allocated to finance. As an example, you can look at one of our customer service people, Lori Peterson at the bottom. Her total salary was in water. And obviously she reports to me in finance. So we decided at your direction to do a cost allocation study. And it considers three factors as they allocate the costs of people who are non-direct support. In other words, I don't work in water, but a lot of the people that work for me work with customers of water. It takes up square footage of City Hall. It takes up cost of materials that we provide and service to those funds. And we decided that based on the number of FTEs, the total percent of the operating budget and how many times items appear on the city council agenda, a study was done and it was determined that the enterprise funds at the bottom, streets, recycled water, water, Hermiston Energy, and regional water, under the old method where we allocated full-time equivalents to those funds, it was nine-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-six dollars, and that's loaded payroll. Under the allocation method, based on those three factors, you will see that there are two places there are large variances. Streets was basically not paying their fair share of general allocations to support them. And water was overpaying their fair share. Because when we do the allocation method, you will see the total cost is nine-twenty-eight-six-nineteen under this study. By hook or by cook, by chance or sheer luck, the old method was within point-eight-six-six percent of the allocation method that we had chosen to put in the twenty-one budget. And the way those funds will be allocated to the general fund is either on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis. And basically, you divide those numbers under the allocation method. Take, for example, recycled water, two-ninety-seven, eight-ninety-four. We will probably make those allocations quarterly. And July one, we will probably take the first quarter's allocation from each of these enterprise funds and put it in the general fund. But I wanted you to understand, we did allocations for all departments in the city. But the enterprise funds are the ones that call on resources outside of their fund. Parks has resource calls against finance, police have resource calls against finance, but we're all in the general fund. So we did not worry about allocating those dollars. We merely wanted to go to the enterprise funds that were not part of the general fund.
So, you know, the question I have about this is there's consequences with this change. Uh, and so when you allocate more resources towards bodies, it means less resources for projects. Am I fairly accurate in that?
Right, but as you can see, the changes don't, don't really take, I mean, they, they take a little bit away from the streets that wasn't there.
Little bit. It's a lot. Hundred thousand dollars in street projects.
Right, out of, you know, a million, couple million dollar budget. We just, we, we feel like this is much more fair and much more defensible. Those, you know, the street projects are taking general fund dollars. General fund dollars are harder to come by than, than street dollars. So that's why we chose to do it this way.
What's our form of revenue for streets?
Gas tax.
And franchise fees.
What franchise?
We, uh, the council decided a couple years ago to dedicate thirty-three percent of all the franchise fees to street projects.
This doesn't need council approval. This is just something you can do.
This isn't, we didn't wanna spring this on you at the budget meeting, so this is an explanation. Doesn't need any action tonight, but just an explanation so we don't have to go into this detail at the budget meeting.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it. You know, and I appreciate you guys looking at administration and each of the departments paying their fair share. I just wanna make sure that we realize, you know, it's a hundred and two thousand dollars potentially in street projects that don't get done. And some of those fees are more changeable than others, that we have more control over than others. And so when you talk about the gas tax, unless you go out and ask the community to raise their taxes on gases, which we know regionally isn't very popular, we don't have a lot of control over that. We do have control over staffing. So I just wanna make sure the council understands that, you know, we're shifting.
All right, we can still, we still have the same control because if we cut staffing, that means the allocation goes down. So we, we cut general fund staffing, provide the support to those, and then there's less cost to those funds.
I mean, I'm okay with the council's support of the change. Uh, I just am worried about making sure our streets stay to the quality that they have now. We receive very little complaints from the community about the quality of our streets. Whereas regionally, there are lots of other communities that hear lots about their streets.
Well, I mean, we, we don't anticipate an increase in complaints at this level, but.
Any other questions from the council on this?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Uh, no motion, so it's just informal information only, but we do take public comment on this? We can't? Is there anybody's eyes? Anybody on the phone? Star seven? Okay. All right, moving on. Quarterly goal-setting report. Mr. Smith, thanks.
Yes, so at the last, if you took at the very last page of the packet, um, there's kind of an update on where we're at on various goals that were adopted in the goal-setting process. Some, and, and we made a change this year, if you remember, that some of these goals were in the three-to-five-year timeframe rather than one-to-two-year. And so some of them, we haven't really done a lot on, but others, we've been working on actively. So um, we are in the, I've been, I have an RFI out for a consultant to help us do a community vision process. And at some point, I'll be looking for one or two council members to participate in uh interviews or evaluation of their proposals. Then um, we are also have started looking at some of the financial pieces, long-range financial scenarios, system development charges. We've started data gathering. Then, uh, let's see. We just hired a new code enforcement off, full-time code enforcement officer, and she's working. And so as far as what other tools we might be missing, she has experience in some other cities. And so we're looking at giving her a chance to get her feet on the ground here and then take a look at what other tools could be used to improve. take a look at what other tools could be used to improve our code enforcement process. We have a couple of these studies are further out in that housing goal area than goal number four, business, supporting the economy. We're working, continue to work on the application for the South Hermiston Industrial Park. We're hoping that the CARES money rains down a little bit on this process and the match requirement becomes more favorable for us, so it's not 50, and so it could be maybe 820 or, or better. Let's see, we are then on the transportation infrastructure. We're working on final design for Garen Harper, and you just approved the property purchased, so we can go forward with that. We're also looking to apply for some funds from the EEA for a study of a bridge location, where would that be, a bridge over in Matilla going towards 82. In our transportation plan, there's currently two locations prescribed, we don't need two bridges that close together, so trying to figure out where that might go. We're trying to get a grant to help us pay for that study so we can then go forward with the long-term plan of how do we pay for building it. Then number six, access to justice. Molly's been working very hard trying to improve administrative processes at the court, and so I anticipate next council meeting, we may have some proposed changes that we would make to that with an ordinance change, so that'll be coming. And then city facilities, those are both out a little ways, so we're, we haven't been actively working on a facilities plan, want to coincide that with the community vision process, and then health wellness at Aquatic Center, we have not worked on that, firming up the feasibility plan on that yet. Happy to answer any questions.
The Garen Harper Road realignment, that'll be coming back in front of the Public Infrastructure Committee sometime in the near future.
Right.
Do you know when that's scheduled?
No, we don't, I don't know that we have a Public Infrastructure Committee scheduled at this point. What is it?
It was 10, it was definitely 26.
Okay, so potentially May.
So we would see that...
Um, I don't think we're ready to, where's the design at?
Yeah, so with the Garen Harper Road project, remember, next fiscal year has basically been our accumulate cash year, we'd always been planning on doing any construction on Garen Harper next year, and doing the construction in our fiscal ending June of '22. The biggest challenge with having next year being our cash accumulation year is that nobody's dragging right now. So, we may end up having to push that out a little bit further. So, we've instructed Anderson Berry not to get into the full-blown design right now. What they have initiated though is about a $60,000 process to start working with Union Pacific on the rail crossing issue, so, because we understand that's going to be a long lead time, so they've deposited funds with Union Pacific to get that process started from Union Pacific's standpoint, but other than that, they're not launching it the full-blown design right now just because we know that our gas tax revenue is going to hit here in the next few months. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the council? You guys too tired to think? I appreciate getting an update. City Manager Smith, are you going to talk about City Hall during your time?
Yeah, during my manager's report.
All right, so we don't need a motion or anything. Is there any public comment on the quarterly goal setting report? Anybody on the phone, star seven? Seeing none, okay, moving on. City committee reports. Has anybody been meeting?
Eotech had a meeting.
Eotech meeting, wanted formerly council, we, City Manager Smith approved a project that's going to be right, if I'm not mistaken, someone correctly got wrong, right by the bathrooms, right up here at Eotech. It's going to be a project that's designed to showcase to the community the beautification of the place while using like drought resistant plants and that kind of thing. So it's hopefully to show the community the conservative approach to water and the fact that you can still beautify the area. Want to thank, was it from the fair, go from the...
Darben.
Yes. I believe he's the person that's leading up. So shout out to those people, and also Steve from the board. I feel like we've been able to make a little bit more progress, and it's really nice to have some tangible things to deliver to the community, so hopefully, knock on wood, wood over here, if things end up going right and we end up having a fair, it should be ready by fair time.
That's why we moved quickly with that from the Eotech advisory committee, so they can be done up there.
Yeah, Eotech advisory committee, we already went put together a Zoom or GoTo.
Zoom, well, it might have been GoTo.
Yeah, we put together a meeting, we all teleconference in, I think all members were present, and had a great conversation about this, we can make sure we got it approved. There's also some access to the bathroom that was addressed in this too, so have a wider pathway to the restroom facility that's over there. Apparently, it's not really recognizable, there'll be some visual displays on there too that says restroom.
Yeah, we're going to improve signage as well, yes.
Did some signage stuff. It'll be also a demonstration garden, not only for, you know, the fair, what can be done in drought resistant eastern Oregon desert, but things that you could take home with you. You know, these are plants you could plant in your landscape at home that are drought resistant and use low water, especially in eastern Oregon. So, that was kind of the goal in mind, is to demonstrate artistic landscape that not only beautifies that area over there and cleans it up, it was a space that wasn't well utilized, but also to show the community some aspects that they could put into their garden as well, and reduce the amount of water that they take up. Couple shady trees, so we identified some shade as a priority to try and create some spaces that people can get shade in the hot summer. Yeah, excited about the project. Any other committees meet? So what is the plan moving forward with our community structure? Are you going to start providing opportunities for that, or wait till it kind of opens back up?
Well, I mean, I think we initially looked at April and May, kind of just watching and waiting, but as, as we look at opening up, we can look at how we might structure those meetings.
That was pretty convenient, the way we did, worked out well. Budget committee, what are we doing there?
That is going to be similar to this, I think. We're going to maybe use this whole room, we haven't figured out the whole details, but separating us as much as possible, and also inviting the committee members, budget committee members can call in and participate. Been authorized to do that through the governor's executive order. So we haven't got all the details yet on the, like, it'll be similar to this video and calling in.
I think so.
Yes, the 21st of May. It's a Thursday.
Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
I would also maybe encourage the budget members, especially those that are newer, to come meet with you ahead of time, they can get a lot of their questions and stuff answered, so that we don't drag out the meeting.
Yeah, I, I saw some things from another city who, who really made an effort to, to do that, tried to get comments ahead of time from budget committee questions and answer them ahead of time, so we're going to try to reach out as soon as we can and get that feedback as well.
Document, it'll be printed here.
Um, it will be pretty soon. I know we just finalized, it should, I think maybe next week, we might be printing it.
Mayor's report, I've been on the phone and TV, or video webinars, like, every other day it seems like with something. The one thing that, you know, the governor has done a great job about taking input from various stakeholders across the state, her physically being present in all of those meetings. And so I really appreciated her willingness to listen, to allow people to participate. You know, she's held phone conferences where, you know, every mayor in every little town and in every community across the state, big or little, has had the opportunity to speak to her directly and the concerns that they have in their community and trying to figure out a way to work through this. You know, none of us has been through this process, and, you know, she's never been through it, the advisors for them have never been through it, you know, seen it on the national level too, nobody's been through it. So, I believe that they're at their hearts trying to do the best they can with the limited amount of experience and information that we have about this, but I really appreciated her willingness to, to listen, and personally listen to the concerns that I have addressed with her, and they've been directed, directly answered. She hasn't ignored them, but she's given great information and taken that as, into her repertoire of information that she's using to make her decisions. And so, hopefully as we roll out a new reopening plan here soon and getting businesses back to the fore, you know, I want to see our small businesses open up as quickly as possible, but as safely as possible, so that we're not harming people needlessly. But, you know, there's a lot of devastation going on right now from, you know, the cure being worse than the disease, and so, we need to get people back to work, we need to get them back up on the point, we need to give them hope, we need to give them potential, and, and still make sure that we have the resources in place to protect people when they do get sick in the first hospital, people who won't. I know the council, or the city has had some conversations at county level, and the county is participating at the state level on potentially a county-by-county rollout approval. And so, I spoke to Commissioner Murdock this weekend, and he's well aware of what my personal opinion called, but also, you know, a plan for the county and what the region needs, and so he's working through the others' office as well to try and develop a plan, make sure our county's prepared to start reopening businesses. If there's ever a situation or concern that you guys have specifically and feel like you need to address it, feel free to, to reach out to me, I'll make sure I express it with them. The League of Oregon Cities has done a great job about opening up opportunities to, to hear the message as well and participate in the conversation. I would encourage you, if you want to participate at a higher level, to get involved in those, they're asking for everybody's, you know, I've been on the phone lots of times with other councilors, and they're asking questions, getting their questions answered. So if there's ever any concern that you guys have, jump on those phone calls and make sure your questions are getting asked, and if you can't do it personally, reach out to me or City Manager Smith, I know it's been a bunch of phone calls to make sure that you're concerned to be able to do this. Uh, how about councilors?
Thank you to John, and sorry I had to see him go.
What are you talking about?
So I, I have a, I have a statement.
Okay, why don't you go first, Mr. Brown?
Dear Mayor, City Manager...
He doesn't know what you're talking about, Lori.
City Manager, citizens of Hermiston. I've been offered promotion with Union Pacific Vill Road, and I have accepted the position. This decision is based on the financial future I will be, and my family and the opportunity is one that I have worked on for many years. Hermiston has been a tremendous place for me to grow as a person, both professionally and personally. I have thoroughly enjoyed my time serving the people of the city of Hermiston as a city councilman. Serving the city has been one of the pleasures of my life, and something I will always cherish for the remainder of my time on this earth. I moved to Hermiston in 20 years ago, over 20 years ago, January of 2000 with nothing more than a job offer and a car I drove in with. I leave Hermiston with my family, friends, and the experience of being permitted to participate in the growth and molding of what Hermiston looks like now will look like in the future. There are many people in this community who seek a voice and an avenue to participate in molding the vision of the city of Hermiston. I encourage anyone who is willing to step forward and let the inclusiveness of the city give you the opportunities you seek and fulfill your desire to make a difference in the city. I am encouraged by the recent addition of new councilors, and I hope there are many more out there willing to step forward and make a difference. As my time comes to a close, I am hoping there are more in this community willing to take a chance and put their name in the hat to fill my position. As tonight is my last time participating as elected official, I wish all men and very best for your futures, and wish the very best for the citizens, citizens of the city of Hermiston, effective midnight tonight, April 27, 2020, I resign my position as an at-large city councilman of the city of Hermiston.
Well, that's sad, John, and happy, and congratulations to you and your family. Sad to see you go. I've really come to get to know you a little bit better over the last eight years, for almost eight years of your service here, and however we ran beforehand in our campaigns, you know, so, go over eight years probably. And I really appreciated your commitment to the city. I appreciated your willingness to participate in making a difference and making this community a better place because of you. And appreciated all the committees that you served on. You were always a thoughtful person, put a lot of work and effort, education into your research and comments that will be missed. I want to wish you and Rhonda and the kids best of luck, your leadership skills. So, I would ask that the council, please join me in a round of applause, maybe a standing ovation. Anybody else want to follow that up?
I'm going to say thank you. I know you, it was a thank you, I think, when you start going to the city council meetings. Thank you for your time and your span of wisdom. Quite a journey.
And you appreciate all the time that we spent together. You've just been one of the voices that I've always liked to hear, your opinions have always mattered very sincerely to me, so I will definitely miss your councilman in this.
Thank you so much. Back to I was surprised and stunned midway through the council meeting when I was shifting through this paper, it's all right. So I thought it was fake. It's April.
You know, honest and sincere, on the real note, I, one of my very first experiences with you was when we had the retreat, the council goal setting session, and I think right then and there, I knew that you were different from the rest of the council. And in many respects, with your ideas. I've come, like, from the very get-go, I've appreciated and respected your assertiveness and being able to stand for what you believed in no matter what, even if the rest of the council disagreed. And I've always known that your heart's always been in the right spot. I had to write some notes down because I knew I was going to forget everything, but your heart's always been in the right spot, and honestly, just like Devin said, I've really admired and respected your opinion on this council, and I know we're going to miss a lot from you leaving, but, you know, that being said, I really want to wish you and your family the best of luck in your future and all the endeavors that you and your family might have. You are a person that I really respect, and I know I haven't really talked to you very much, like, or we're not texting buddies or anything like that, but...
Not any Facebook friends.
We're Facebook friends.
Maybe Instagram, dude.
That's the next step. But I really, I really want to say thank you for all the ideas you provided the citizens of Hermiston, but honestly, personal growth for me, I've learned a lot with you.
Any exciting John you guys want to talk about?
This time you have the phone back into the government.
Yeah.
The government. Mrs. Brown, thank you. You explained the way we got our indigenous skill before what tomorrow. Yes, they speak some Spanish, but I don't think they can read it. We got the signs, but you go to the laundry mat and you see all the farmers together. You go to the store, it's like normal day, and I come through. I mean, if they really know about virus, I mean, they're good. They speak different dialects. You go to the store, they're like, normal day, and I confirm, I mean, if they really know about virus, I mean, they speak different dialects.
So, here, a couple days ago, the last few, I should say, I attended online a meeting of the Umatilla County Coordinated Human Services Public Transportation Plan. Basically, it was just a kind of a fact finding thing there, it was just getting everybody's opinion. But one of the things that was included in that was a survey that they're trying to get, community input, including ours. It will be coming to you, the link for that survey will be coming to you in the email here sometime in the near future. And I'm also hoping that maybe we can get that, the link, I sent it to Lilly, just like in the last ten minutes.
I was gonna say.
Last ten minutes, yeah, 'cause I just realized I didn't send it to her, I had ten dollars for the candy. Social distancing at a stream level. And, but if we could get that put, maybe get that put on, the survey online on the website, because what it is, is basically, we're trying to come up with a plan to put all the monies together, and you know, what, you know, what's, one of the questions they ask is, you know, what's your dream budget, basically? You know, what, you know, if you could, if you could have, you know, if the money wasn't, if the money wasn't a problem, what would you have? You know, and of course, my contribution was, you know, twenty-four hour service and with stops at all the major employers, so, but.
Light rail from here to Portland?
I didn't quite know that. But in any case, because everybody was throwing their stuff, you know, at that point, but, so, yeah, you know, if you get a chance to do that, it's a SurveyMonkey site, and it's the surveymonkey.com/umatilla countypublictransit, all one word. So, if you get a chance to go on there and, you know, the whole thing is, is if it's not in the plan, they can't ask for the money for it, so.
These are monies that are being expended for the train, state transportation plan?
Yeah, the state transportation plan, the statewide traffic, or transit infrastructure fund, and the STF, all that good stuff. So, if you don't ask for it, you can't have it.
Anything else? Yes?
A couple of things, well, first of all, I wanna say, you know, thank you, council, for approving that resolution to support the people of color caucus.
You didn't leave with like the recommendation.
I wanted on the record that it would be. But I really sincerely wanna say thank you, we're actually the second city to sign that resolution and support it behind Kaiser. So, I think it really, you know, is a testament to how, you know, how we're trying to be inclusive to our community, and, you know, I believe this caucus will really give people of color an opportunity to network and share ideas, and really, that's the big thing that it's for, and I think it's very advantageous for people of color that are barely getting to put on the ground in the political sphere, but I really wanna thank you again for that. The other thing I really wanna give a thank you, actually, to Representative Smith and State Senator Hansel. They had a joint emergency board meeting this last Thursday, I believe, at ten, and they actually both approved and said aye to the Oregon Worker Relief Fund. And the Oregon Worker Relief Fund is ten million dollars, that's been set aside, this is Oregon, specifically for people that are undocumented. So, people that missed out on the stimulus check because they didn't have the right documentation, the state of Oregon still wants to support you as community members, and they recognize that you also contribute to society via taxes, via multiple things, and they set that money aside. I was really happy that both of them, I sent them an email prior to the meeting, and I was really happy that they both voted yes on that. So, that is a fund that's out there, there's a lot of people in our community that really need those resources. So, I encourage people, again, if you know anybody, just spread the word, the Oregon Worker Relief Fund is out there.
I applaud.
The application process right now, I believe it's through CalSA, they're in the Oregon's Right Group. I will share the link with everybody here, I'll send it to City Manager Smith as well as Lilly, but I think it's something that a lot of people in our community will be able to hopefully access. The big worry for me is I knew a lot of nonprofit organizations were gathering money for this cause, but most of that, most of those causes end up being on the west side of the state, so I was really happy that we had fun. Where the people on the east side have also more of an equal opportunity to actually access those funds, so. Again, my hats off to those representatives, thank you for hearing us out, and know that you are supporting community members here. It's just really sad to see, even if, let's just say you had children that were American citizens, you still didn't get a stimulus check. If you're a dactyrr recipient, you didn't get a stimulus check, if you are an undocumented person married to an American citizen, you still didn't get a stimulus check. And so, there's a lot of loopholes that happen, but I'm really happy that Oregon is a state that's still willing to support all of its community members.
Good for you for stepping up and reaching out to your representatives too. That should acknowledge the fact that they do care, that they do listen to the representatives in the community, and making sure that your voice is heard, and taking the voice of something that's passionate amongst the groups that you represent, and sharing that with groups up in the ladder, I think, is one of your true responsibilities as councillor, and so, I applaud you for taking that effort upon yourself and reaching out to them and making sure your voice is heard. Other questions from councillor comments? Mr. Smith?
So, I know it's getting late, I was asked to update on a couple of projects, and so, I'm gonna try to do those quickly. First, just to let you know, technically, we are not a part of the Airport Road project. We were named in a lawsuit, but we don't own the road, we don't, we're not in the project, but we're named in a lawsuit, so. City Hall, so, next meeting in May is when we were planning to come back, talk about getting further permission to move forward. But in the meantime, we've been working on the design, hope to have a conference call later this week specifically on the library design. They wanna get that renovation design done, so it can go to bid hopefully next month, and so, we're continuing forward with that. Had some further discussions with the government agency, unnamed government agency, and those discussions are going forward, in good direction. We did get some less good news, the additional enterprise zone project is on hold, so, we'll come back to you with a, hopefully, another recommendation of how money could work. But at this point, the COVID impact on that company has been too severe, so they put all their investment on hold, so. But the other company, Amazon, looks to be moving more quickly on their projects, so we're hopeful that that will move forward. I think that's about it, we've got, I think we have most of the contents back from City Hall that also cleaned, been taken out and cleaned and had stored for a while, but I think that most of that is evolved, so. Any questions, anything about?
I think, you know, just fortuitous, lucky, whatever you wanna call it, but good job by the council for putting some kind of sideboards in, proving City Hall, nobody would've known that this would've happened, you know, that COVID would've showed up, and people would've stopped eating french fries, or, you know, the plants would've got shut down. And, you know, there's things that happen, potentially, that have impacted a revenue stream, and potentially may prevent us from not being able to build at City Hall. And so, good job for you guys doing your responsibility of making sure fiscally you were being respectful of the citizens' money and making sure that those things were in hand before we spend them. So, nobody would've known this was gonna happen, but good job for doing so. Sad to hear, hopefully, that'll change rapidly, and that people will get back to producing whatever they produce.
And then, we were also requested to give kind of an update on Fundland, and so, I've asked Mr. Better to give a quick update.
Oh, there's people out there.
Going around for three hours.
Well, I'll make this very brief, I did wanna share some updates on Fundland, and before, go ahead and flip the next slide. Oh, that one right there. So, but before I get into Fundland, I just wanna share some updates park system wise. Our parks are open with the exception of Riverfront Park, it's because of the flood, not COVID, people aren't using it. We do have signs up that talk about social distancing, and our playgrounds are closed. We've chosen not to put tape around them, like I've seen other places, it's just too much wind and trouble. So, we do have signs up telling people that, and mostly people are respecting the playground restrictions, so. We do, my staff has been trying to come up with alternative programming, so we've invented a Family Feud that's online, if you're interested in that. Got a hundred day challenge program that's going on, so we've had to retool. While we've canceled all of our gym-based programs, our youth-based programs, we still are doing the lunch program in partnership with the school district. And that's one program that will continue through the summer, although we don't know what kind of summer we're gonna have relative to, are we gonna get to run the pool or not, are we gonna get to run day camps or not? So, we do, we've canceled all of our community center activities through May, and we're on hold relative to June. So, we're in a holding pattern across the board till we know what we're gonna be able to do. Meanwhile, we've hired, made offers to lifeguards and our pool staff, and we've told them, the mayor meant I have a job with us depending on how this turns out, so. Quite nerve wracking, so, on to Fundland, I've got a few slides to share with you. These are some new slides, some of these images you've seen before, some of them go pretty quickly, but I wanted to share some new things to you, just kinda walk around. This is roughly what our port of Umatilla crane would look like, it's gonna be a custom piece, and that's why this is the best image we can share with you right now, it is a custom piece. Go ahead, let's hit a few more, Lilly. Looking at it from above, I'm still the, kind of the Native American camp, I'm still working on the color scheme for that, so don't take literally the, what would be the port in place schematic there, but we, it's really coming together nicely, and we are in line with our order, but I've not pulled the trigger on colors and some of those final details. So, we will start to see pieces show up in the next six to eight weeks.
It's rare.
Yeah, that's the actual jalapeno that we're.
Much better.
Yeah, thank you. I keep going, just a few more. Some of these pictures, again, you've seen before, and this is our actual, go back one, that's our actual pirate ship, it's, that ours is gonna look like. We're gonna borrow that same color scheme, this is from the same manufacturer, so this is a real image from a real park somewhere else, and we just love this pirate ship, that's gonna be ours as well. Yeah, so, moving on to the next slide, one more to you, please. So, expense wise, now, if you take away some of the other in-kind costs, you get down to real expenses, 1.3 is about where we're sitting on expense, and we've matched up, haven't gone through our fundraising with our resource side. So, all of the pledges are in place, thank you very much to the fundraising team. We really were concerned about people backing out with this economic situation, and we haven't seen a lot of that, we've seen a little of that, but not a lot of that. We've actually seen more pledges come in recently, and that's gonna continue to happen. Or, this whole picket sale program now is, looks like it's gonna be headed up by the churches. So, they wanna take that on and run the picket sales for us, we think that's possible. So, down to hand, we've got a balanced budget, one of the delays that we're expecting will be in the products that are coming from California. Most of the equipment's coming from Oregon, but the stuff coming from, oh, excuse me, I said California, it's getting late, Colorado. They've been hit pretty hard with their work restrictions, so their warehouse has been shut down. So, we don't know when those specialty pieces, like the watermelon, the onion, those one-off pieces, they may not get to us till, we don't know when they're gonna get to us, but the playground will not be done until all of the pieces are here in place, but you'll start to see activity in six to eight weeks, and we're, I'm hoping that we have a fall opening. So, that's the update on Fundland, questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Exciting. Exciting to see that project moving forward now and having some resources there to build the park that the community wants, so. Super excited to see that, hopefully the council will reuse it, that's. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for your patience this evening, for all of the.